It's nice to see everyone back. We had a little bit of a break. I have a very special guest with me this morning. It's Clayton Tyndall.
Skylar Tyndall.
Oh, Skylar Tyndall. But you went to Clayton Middle School?
Yes.
Okay, that's right. That's why I'm confused. We're out of practice this morning. Anyway, he's our future mayor, and we met at a Donor Network West event. Your uncle was so generous, he donated his organs to save someone else's life. So we have a lot of things in common. Isn't that great? So, anyway, he ran up to me and said, "Oh, my goodness, Mayor. Thank you for what you do. I'd love to be a mayor one day." Well, I kind of recruited him whenever he was so interested in politics. How old are you?
I'm 11.
11. And he's interested in politics, and this is our future. So I thought it would be great to have you come to a council meeting and sort of kick us off. So with that being said, we are going to start out with the Pledge Allegiance of the Flag. How about if you lead us in the pledge, Skylar?
Alright.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow. Pretty good. It was very bold. I loved it. Excellent. Okay, at this time, we're going to send it back to you, Madam Clerk, for roll call.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Breckus.
Here.
Dour.
Here.
Delgado.
Here.
Jarden.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Tyndall.
Here.
Sheevy. Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
All right, thank you so much. Before we go into public comment, I'm going to send it right back to you, Skylar. We have another very special recognition, and this is for Close Knit Friends, and Skylar is going to read the proclamation to a group of women who have done an outstanding job here in our city. So who's all here from Close Knit Friends? Raise your hand. Good morning, ladies. Come on up.
Whereas the Closh
Hang on just a second. The mayor's going to come and join you at the podium while everybody gets up.
Great job. Let's get a little bit of background.
You're short, baby.
I'm very short.
Hi, how are you? Good morning. Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Nice to see you guys, or girls. Okay, come on up, and tell us a little bit about Close Knit Friends. I thought it was incredible. Who wants to get up and just talk a little bit about it?
I didn't think I'd be appointed this, but we are a group of knitters, crocheters, but just gives warmth and love to the community where we can. We work with a lot of the organizations that have needy needs. It's kind of a small group, but it brings us a lot of joy and a lot of connection with the community. And I'm glad you guys recognized this. This is so cool.
Well, I was touched by your story because part of your story, too, is that you really ramped it up during the pandemic.
Absolutely. We kept going.
That is really where you got a lot of your recognition, and you were doing a lot in this community. So we thought it was very special.
I think we need to say Peggy Whitney is not here today. She's the leader of this, and she is so dedicated to the mission. We wish she were there, but are here.
I met her. She's great.
Oh, I'm so glad. That's so cool. You guys, this is so neat.
Yeah. So we're going to hand it off to future mayor, Skylar. So you get to go ahead and read this. I think you can do it all without me. So go ahead.
Whereas the Close Knit Friends group makes and donates Afghans and other items to people in need in our community, as well as small Afghans for infants baptized at Holy Cross Lutheran Church, and whereas the organization has been knitting and giving for well over 12 years. They are very passionate about making items of warmth and comfort for our most vulnerable population. And whereas their motto of be encouraged and knit together by strong ties of love, from collisions to...
Where are you at? I can't see. To be encouraged?
I'm right here.
Oh, where are you?
Collisions.
Okay.
Two, 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 two?
Free collisions, two, two, and faith-based ministry. They enjoy developing friendships.
And gathering and fellowship with others who also enjoy knitting and crotching. And whereas the Close Knit Friends group encourages everyone to participate and provide the treasured items from the men, women, and children being assisted by the local organizations, and all skill levels are welcome to join in the creativity. Now therefore, I, Hillary Sheevy, Mayor of the City of Reno, Nevada, hereby proclaim July 20th, 22, as Close Knit Friends Day.
Ah, superb. You get your very own day. All right, well, here. So stand right here.
And Skylar, can we have your parents come up and join you, and we'll get a picture?
Can we get this picture?
Yes, you sure can.
And his grandma. Parents, grandma, any relative of Skylar, come on up. Everybody squeeze in, and we'll get a picture here. I don't know if we've got a city's... We do have city staff taking pictures. Look at Rick right here.
Here, hold on one second. Wait, wait, wait. Okay, here we go.
One, two, suck it in.
All right, good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, 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 it's really important. It's really important. You did a great job.
Yes, you did.
Great job.
Wow, I am impressed. That is such a great job you did. Great job. Okay, at this time, we're going to send it back to Madam Clerk. Let's go into public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I apologize. We are transitioning with some new technology today, so it might be a little bit bumpier than normal for me. All right, here we are, moving into item A3, general public comment. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Please note that council may not take action upon any matter not agendized. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior, and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. Our first public commenter today is Jerry Mifsud, followed by Steve Anderson, followed by Ron Trevor.
I thought you were supposed to take these in order, because I came up there after a lot of people. Why are you putting me up first?
If you'd like to make...
I understand why.
Thank you.
You know that I'm going to be a problem for the city council, and the city council is a problem for me. I'm going to read you an article that was written after I was thrown out of here two months ago because I had my shirt open. My shirt is open, and I'm still allowed in the room. I was also banned from City Hall for six months. Somebody authorized that. The article reads, Reno City Councilmember Devin Reese, on Wednesday, told a man making a public comment during a council meeting that he had to dress appropriately to speak during the comment. He's not here now. I see why. The man spoke before the City Budget Committee. The man chastised council members about the condition of Teglea Paradise Park, which has E. coli in its ponds to this day, and has gone slightly over the three minutes to speak. Then Reese chimed in, "I'm excited that you're considering public life." Well, I only did that to scare you all. Next time you show up in the chambers, please dress appropriately for the body. That's your warning. That's what you said to a senior citizen. How humiliating. The man proceeded to argue with Reese. "This is your one warning," big shot. They proceeded to raise their voice at one another, and my mic was turned off. A Reno police officer came and escorted me out. He put his hand underneath my armpit to pull me out of the room. That's the way you treat your seniors? Clothing can... An attorney for the ACLU, who I've been in contact with, not formally though, called Reno's Reese's comments troubling. Clothing can constitute expressive conduct if it meets two requirements. The first is that nothing is worn to convey a particular message. Chris Peterson of the ACLU then said, "And two, there's a great likelihood the message would be understood by those who view it." If there is no dress code, and there isn't, where is the legal basis to talk to somebody in this way, Mr. Reese? Government officials made it clear, made to be careful in that content, especially when they are sharing information they may not want to hear. Councilman, Councilmember Jenny Brexus objected to the man's removal, and that's dissension amongst the city council. And I'm sure there were other members that expressed their dismay at your conduct. I'm not going to read any more of this. "I was banned from City Hall for six months, and then suddenly removed. I asked to speak to you, Mayor, and to you, Mr. Thornley, and both of you refused to talk to me, to head off me coming here today and airing our laundry. So in the next successive city council meetings, you're going to hear more from me."
All right, thank you, Jerry. Okay.
An apology. That's all I ask for.
Thank you, Mr. Mifsud. Our next commenter is Steve Anderson, followed by Ron Trevor, followed by Mark Markell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, good morning, council members. Thank you, Mayor and Mayor of the Day Tyndall, Steve Anderson from Reno. And I am the representative of the Financial Advisory Board to the City of Reno, and so we are happy to serve. We so thank you all for your service. It can be joyful, and maybe not so joyful sometimes. I've known it so far. We have presented our work plan for the 2022-23 fiscal year to you, and I guess it's a consent item later. I have a busy day, so I thought I'd come up and make a public comment, let you know that if you have questions, especially suggestions, you can email myself as the vice chair, or Tila Meckler, or of course, Vicky Van Buren, the interim finance director. And I thank you for your service, and I think that's what I needed to make sure that you knew that we were engaged.
Thank you for your service.
All right. Thank you, Mayor of the Day.
Thank you.
All right. Have a great day.
And that, and one more thing we do need to point out, Vicky is now our permanent physician. So congratulations. So give her a big round of applause. She's now our official finance director. Good job. Thank you so much. I appreciate...
Thank you.
We have opinions.
Yeah, that's what we want.
All right, Ron Trevor, followed by Mark Markell, followed by Terry Brooks.
Good morning. My name is Ron Trevor, and I'd like to thank the council and the two mayors, which I've never presented in front of before, for allowing me to speak today. I'm a representative of SAVE, which stands for the Senior Auxiliary Volunteer Effort that works with the Reno Police Department. And today I've got the recaps of our hours volunteered for second quarter 2022. SAVE currently has 62 active volunteers with another four in training. During the second quarter, there was a total of 3,865 hours volunteered by members of SAVE. This represents a savings of $101,185 and change to the City of Reno. Some of the key areas that were covered over the period is citizen contacts. We had 3,450, 48-hour notices placed on abandoned vehicles, 1,082, school patrols, 289, handicap violations, 205, traffic surveys, 93, and stolen plates or fictitious plates discovered and turned over to the police department was 13. This month, as I'm sure most of you are aware of, SAVE celebrated their 25th anniversary in service to Reno. During that time, SAVE members have volunteered over 450,000 hours, which translates into an approximate savings of $8.7 million to the City of Reno. The members of SAVE would like to thank Mayor Sheevy and the City of Reno for recognizing our contributions over the past 25 years by proclaiming January, pardon me, July 1st, 2022, as Senior Auxiliary Volunteer Effort Day. Thank you. And does anybody have any questions?
It's my honor to do so, and I want to say thank you to Vice Mayor because I know she came and read the proclamation, and then I actually got to come for cake.
Oh.
But I want to say tremendous job, and it was really great meeting everyone because that's a lot of work that you guys do, and a lot of times it doesn't get recognized.
And I left early that day. I did, I passed on the cake.
So you missed the cake.
I did. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Mark Markell, followed by Terry Brooks, followed by Maury Cabaz.
Hello, Madam Mayor. I see council members in the cell, man. And my name is Mark Markell, and I'm a concerned Reno resident. I don't talk very well, so I'll keep this short. I'm just here to warn people and show people what can happen if you ride with drunk drivers. Back in 89, I was in a drunk driving crash. We were doing a hundred, me and the driver, over a freeway, and there was a car exiting the freeway, and we swerved and hit a curb and rolled eight times. And I was ejected, and the car landed on my head and put me in a coma for a month. And I was in hospital for five and a half months more. Anyways, I just want to warn people and show people what can happen if you ride drunk drivers. That's, that's, that's it. Thank you.
Great message, Mark. Good job.
Terry Brooks, followed by Maury Cabaz.
I hope I do as good a job here as you did. Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks again. And today I'd like to address following the money to education when it comes to homelessness. If you're a young kid in a poor family and want a good education, doing so just might be an unreal expectation. And if you are a young kid in a family that is homeless, you are even less likely to see getting an education with success. If you do go to a public school, you may not be able to follow every rule. And if you have no money for your school supplies, you may not have, you may have to do without what the rich kid buys. But you really find it as no surprise that all the rich kids have all their supplies. And when it's lunchtime, but you have no money for food, you might want to hide yourself somewhere in solitude because at lunchtime, all the rich kids eat, while all the poor kids have little or nothing to eat. And later on, all the rich kids get to go to college, too, something that the poor kids don't often get to do. The tuition for college has gotten really high, but it's something that the rich kids still can buy. And their wealthy parents can just buy their way, even with expensive bribes that they are willing to pay. So when the poor kids do without proper education, they also do, they also don't do as well when it comes to an occupation. So follow the money to the wealthy people again, while the poor people are doing without it again. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I look forward to coming back when I have even more to say.
How's the book coming?
It's coming really good. Last time I was here, I misspoke about how many more times I was going to address you on the homeless problem. This is chapter 34, and I only have 12 more that I'm going to address you with, and in two sections that I won't bother you with, but they'll be included in the book.
Okay, great.
So...
Well, we're looking forward to publishing it. Good job.
All right. I'm looking forward to you publishing it, too. I hope it goes to a really good cause.
It's going to be great.
Do I get any cake?
Yes, I will give you cake.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Terry.
Our final public commenter in the room is Maury Cabaz.
Hi, Maury.
Hi.
Good morning.
I wish I could be as calm as he is.
He's calm. He's good.
Congratulations on primary, Council Dour and Mayor Sheevy. You know me, and you know my story. I have been faxing you on poverty, theft, racial profiling, and it was probed by robbery homicide in 2003. It's altogether a disturbing case. I'm here to tell you that the unofficial channel to resolve this, Mayor Sheevy and Council Dour 89502, is not working. What happened in 2016, as I reported, an official effort got underway thanks to City Attorney Hall and the council, and it got sabotaged. It got sabotaged by Reza, who's my stockholder and a police agent. Not a smart one and not a very clean one. Anyway, after that, a follow-up, there was a unofficial effort got underway involving Aziz Shirazi, who works with the city, I think in an unofficial, unofficial capacity to, you know, solve problems, which I think it works sometimes, you know, with developers, new faces, getting friendly and all that. But it's not working in this space because, as I reported then, Reza contacted her, and they became a couple, and they had a child together. And it just was sabotage. The dynamics was destroyed right at the beginning. And I reported all that. Now, I respect this woman. I respect greatly her family. They've done so much for Persian community, Jewish community, so much they have done for us. But this dynamic is not working. And I'm here to ask you to please, especially the mayor and the council, to give the city attorney what he told me, he told me he needs, an authorization to enter settlement or direct negotiation with me because they have put me in a very bad position. They stole my property. They destroyed multi-project, multimillion-dollar project that was patented. I am totally isolated. This is a, the robbery homicide referred to them as satanic worshippers. This is very disturbing, you know, and I'm at the end of my roof. I've been patient. I've been a, you know, I've been, I've been good sports and all that. Basically, Aziz is half the age of four men involved. She's being played. And for whatever reason, her ego knowingly or not knowingly, she continues with this, and it's not working. That's all I'm here to tell you. On the other stuff, on the stolen property, it looks like my suggestion, my solution is accepted.
30 seconds.
My suggestion was, was accepted that I, the Reza's attorney pointed finger at City. City was not involved. I suggested, okay, City can chip in $340,000, but I'm going to hold all five people responsible in his group. But City is getting 20% donation on the $8 million settlement and the matter of property from me, which is going to exceed $1 million on better policing and other stuff. So the city is not going to be paying anything on this matter of property. I get everything in writing, and I, and I fax it to you.
Thank you.
I'll get it in writing. Thank you so much. Good things.
Thank you. Nice to see you. Excited to see actually everyone in person. Thank you.
All right, Mayor Sheevy, our last commenter is a Zoom attendee, Adam Gottlieb.
Okay. Hi, Adam.
Adam, if you would, state your name for the record and begin speaking.
Delightful. Yes. Good morning. Good morning, Mayor Sheevy, and good morning, Mayor Tyndall and city council members. My name is Adam Gottlieb. I am the National Convention co-chair for the American Political Items Collectors National Convention that is having its big show right now here at the Atlantis. And I wanted to say, on behalf of the board, on behalf of the planning committee, on behalf of members and their family, thank you. Thank you for extending your hospitality. Thank you for extending a welcome letter that is in our program that has been handed out to all of the collectors and dealers from 40 different states who are visiting our city, your city. We are excited to have the biggest political button show in the world, in the biggest little city in the world. That also warms my heart to see Skylar sitting on the dais because I was about your age when I joined the APIC. I'm a passionate collector of Teddy Roosevelt and political Americana, and what people will see at the show is an explosion of pop culture, of political Americana, really the, the story of America laid out in tangible forms. We had the great pleasure of the, of Councilmember Reese joining us last night at the National Automobile Museum for our welcome reception. And I invite you and your constituents to join us Friday and Saturday at the Atlantis. It is free to the public, free appraisals. We have exhibits from every, every type of memorabilia you can imagine. It's not only buttons, it's banners, it's posters, it's ribbons, it's even earrings and clothing. You can imagine how many different messages get out through a political campaign. You might understand that since you are elected leaders in our city. The American Political Items Collectors is a nonprofit organization dedicated to the collection, preservation, and education of the artifacts that make up the story of America. I just wanted to give you, spent part of my morning to say thank you and welcome you to our show.
Well, Adam, you sound like you have a, maybe you've had a, can you, can you hear me? I wonder if you can hear me.
I hear you just fine, Mayor. What was the question?
Oh, you sound like you've had maybe a career in radio. Yes, no?
Yeah, once upon a time.
Or television or something. Television or radio.
You're very kind. I worked at a radio station when I was in college. The old joke about college, about radio is if you want to make a large for, if you want to make a small fortune in radio, start with a large one. But it is, it is part of my, my role as a marketing and communications professional. Smile, acknowledge.
I can't wait to come by. I think it's on my calendar for tomorrow, actually, and I think it's so fascinating, and I'm sure now more than ever, what people are starting to collect will be really interesting history. Obviously, you know, what you have now, you know, from decades ago and incredible campaigns and, you know, politicians and events, and so I think it's really fantastic. By the way, you're doing a fantastic job on Twitter. I just want to let you know. You guys are doing a great job. But welcome to the biggest little city, and thank you for coming.
I, we are, we are happy to be here. I will tell you that a lot of our collectors have never been in Reno before, so we are, we are putting on the, pulling out all the stops and making sure that they have a great time. I will, I will leave you with one very interesting item, and that is that not only can people come to the show and learn about the hobby, but there are, we have a Smithsonian internship through the American Political Items Collectors. It is really the best, single best place to learn about history by holding it in your hands. And we welcome everyone to the show.
Wow, that's fascinating. Okay, great. Good to know. So make sure you leave some information on that. We'd like to help get you some interns.
Sure, yeah. And Skylar, come on by. We'll give you a couple of free buttons, promise.
We got to get a button with your face on it, right?
Did, did you receive the buttons that we sent you?
Yes.
I didn't get mine. No, it was? Oh, I didn't get mine, but I'll, I'll follow up and we'll see.
Come on. Come on by, we'll give you one.
All right, thank you so much, Adam. Have a, have a great day. Go ahead. Councilman Reese, thank you for attending last night.
Of course, Madam Mayor, I was, uh, happy to do it. Uh, two things, one is Mr. Gottlieb is a very gracious host, uh, I wanted to make two comments. One was about the venue, uh, the National Automobile Museum really rolled out the red carpet last night, and, um, they've been doing quite a bit over there, and I know, Madam Mayor, you've been over there to see some of the remodeling that they've done and expanding and also acquiring some new, um, really just incredible automobiles and in the history in its own right. Uh, the Elvis collection was particularly interesting, given the movie that's out. Uh, so I encourage everyone to make their way over and see a lot of the changes there. And then as to the APIC, what an incredible group. I had the opportunity last night to meet people, there were about two hundred people in attendance for the opening session, and I spoke to people from Des Moines, Iowa, from Wisconsin, uh, Florida, Maryland, I think Colorado, and these are people who had never been to Reno. And, uh, were here for the first time, and, you know, a lot of it was asking what other things should they check out, so, you know, we talked about the dragon lights, our Art Town events, Lake Tahoe, and really just, you can see that with even a convention on the smaller side, really has a huge economic impact, so I appreciated that and that they brought the convention to Reno, really, uh, it was great.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Thank you so much for going. I'm sure they loved having you. Okay, Skylar, I'm gonna send it back to you, so you can help us transition into the next item.
Oh, sorry, Madam Mayor, just for the record, before we move on. Um, we did receive seven, seventeen comments, which were general in nature, or not directly associated with the agenda item for today. Before four P M. yesterday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, these were written comments received via Reno.gov online public comment portal or by email to our office. Copies of these have been distributed to the Reno City Council and are available on Reno.gov. Four comments in favor, five comments in opposition, and eight comments of concern. Additionally, we do have six voicemails, which we'll transition to now.
Oh, we gotta wait for a voicemail. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So we're gonna wait for a voicemail.
Hello, my name is Andrea Matt Diottica. I don't be granted section eight housing. Every apartment I have called, they have not listed if they have availabilities. I call them, and they'll say, no, we don't have any availabilities, or they just claim won't answer. Um, I think this needs to get addressed because, um, they're getting federal funding for this program, and if they have no availabilities, they weren't you supposed to be housed back. Do you understand? And with them not calling you back, that kinda is a little frustrating for me because how am I supposed to find an apartment when no one will call you back? I don't think that's right either. And we are having a problem with housing, and why aren't these managers in their offices answering their phone calls? Good question, huh? Anyway, and I think it's wrong, and it is wrong. Anyway, thank you. Bye. If you need to get ahold of me, my phone number is seven-seven-five-three-nine-three-zero-zero-eight-nine. Thank you very much.
Yeah, my idea or my comment is that up here in the North Valleys, we have dozens now, dozens of bar days warehouses. They've come up like Daniel Lyons in your lawn, and I think it would be a great idea if you could get the high school art classes and maybe the college art classes to go out and paint those buildings, put scenes of Nevada miners, put in, uh, foresting and pictures painted in Lake Tahoe. Kids, their imagination, it could be anything. I mean, we got a whale in downtown Reno, why, why don't we have something painted on those ugly warehouses that are just all over everywhere? It would certainly make things more palatable if you're stuck in traffic. And that was my comment. I think that maybe, I'm sure the high school art class would love to do something like that, you probably gonna need permission from fourteen to hundred different owners of the buildings, but it would be great to paint something on them, that, that something that has to do with Nevada's past, illustrious past, even the football team and the baseball team. Anything is better than those beige awful walls. They could paint trees on all of them, and it would look like a forest. Anyway, that's my comment, and, uh, maybe someday we'll see it. Thank you.
I love that. It's awesome. This is why it's important to come to council and share your ideas.
I'm calling in regards to some delivery vehicles. Uh, I live at Fairway Park Men or Apartments, right there. Uh, it goes a couple of blocks on Barham Lane and Plumas, Clover, Glenda Way, and Plumas in that area. And I've noticed over the past year, several vehicles from Amazon making deliveries, and most recently, uh, the plates are from New Jersey, and they've been operating for over a month. And I'm just wondering, and I see lots of California plates on these delivery vans. The last one from, with New Jersey plates was a nice Mercedes delivery van, well, quite expensive, but I'm just wondering why they run so many of them with not Nevada plates when they're making deliveries here? Uh, I'm not sure, I was told by the, uh, Reno Direct person that they don't really have any say in that, just parking enforcement, but these vehicles do park, and they, you know, have to make their deliveries. And the plates are from New Jersey and California, the two most often ones I see, and I've reported them before, but apparently Reno Direct doesn't cover it. And I'm just wondering if maybe you, I can't get ahold of motor vehicles to find out what the legality is, but somebody should talk to Amazon and find out why, why they're running plates that aren't Nevadas. And I've seen them driving for over a month, so I'm not sure how much time they have to register a vehicle that they import all the way from New Jersey. Anyway, I hope you can take a look at that and, uh, ask Amazon what's up. Thank you. Uh, yes, I'm leaving a message at eleven forty A M.
Why is it that nothing is being done in regards of spinning issues between Conway Lane, okay, West Seventh Street and McCarran? There's nothing, complain and complain and complain after complaint. Nothing, uh, nothing's been done? I have never seen a police officer on this special street. Why? Why is between Conway Lane and McCarran on West Seventh Street, Reno, Nevada? Please do something about this. I'm tired of this.
Hi, my name is Michelle Greb, G R E B. My phone number, two-eight-seven-three-zero-nine-two, don't know if you need it. Um, I just have a complaint about these new scooters that are being rented. I think it's a great idea and all that, I have no problem with it, except for the fact that I'm paralyzed and I'm in an electric chair, and they're being left on sidewalks all over my neighborhood, and I'm having a hell of a time getting around. I mean, I have to get on the busy street of Keystone at times to go around a scooter, and it's, it's, it's very, it's impacting me, and I'm sure a lot of other handicap people, big time. Just wanted to put that comment out there, thank you very much.
All right, Madam Mayor, with that, we have no additional public comment.
All right, Mayor, take it away.
This concludes our public comment portion of the meeting. We will now go into item A four, sending it back to you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we're moving on to item A four, approval of the agenda.
All right. Thank you, everyone, make it a motion from council. I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, we're moving into item A five, approval of the minutes for the June first, twenty twenty-two meeting.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good job, you're even saying your aye. Okay.
Okay, we're moving on to our consent agenda, so all of our B items.
Okay, thank you so much. At this time, I'm gonna ask council members to pull any items off this agenda for discussion. I'm gonna start with you, to my left, Councilwoman Weber. All right, thank you, Councilwoman Dour.
Yeah, I have three, um, item B six, which is, uh, for Rusty Taco, item B fifteen, which is the E S G, that's the Emergency Solutions Grant Coronavirus Aid, and item B sixteen.
All right, thank you so much. Bye, Mayor.
Sustainability.
Nothing? Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Delgado. All right, Councilwoman Reese.
Madam Mayor, I have, um, B thirty-three and B thirty-four, B three-three and B three-four.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Councilwoman Breckus.
Um, I have items B eight through B twelve, B nineteen, B twenty-three, B twenty-five, and B twenty-six.
Eight, twelve, twenty-five, and twenty-six?
Eight through twelve, nineteen, twenty-three, twenty-five, and twenty-six.
All right, Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, just for the record, I'm gonna repeat what I've got up here.
Yes, please.
So, um, we have B six, pulled by Councilmember Dour, B eight through twelve, pulled by Councilmember Breckus, B fifteen and sixteen, pulled by Councilmember Dour, B nineteen, Councilmember Breckus, twenty-three, Councilmember Breckus, twenty-five, twenty-six, Councilmember Breckus, and B thirty-three and thirty-four, Councilmember Reese.
That's what I have done.
Great.
Okay, thank you so much.
And before we take a motion on that, I do have one public commenter in the item, in the audience for, um, our B items. Alicia Rasmussen.
Okay, come on up, Alicia.
Good morning, mayors and members of council. My name's Alicia Rasmussen, I'm with Northern Nevada Children's Cancer Foundation. I'm joined by Bridget Cole, our Assistant Executive Director, and in spirit by Holly Acock, our Executive Director, who is not able to be here today. Um, we wanted to just do a quick thank you for your consideration on, um, item B thirty-four. Uh, Northern Nevada Children's Cancer Foundation's been serving the community since the year two thousand. We help families, um, who are facing a childhood cancer diagnosis from age zero to twenty-six. In this community, we are typically serving about a hundred and twenty families at any given time. Um, this agenda item is a, a huge help to us in helping with our mission of advocating and, uh, spreading awareness for these children and their families. Um, we invite you all to please join us on September first, as we light the arch gold for the second year in a row. Um, these funds are going to help us offset the cost of completing that, uh, mission. We can't thank you enough.
Yeah, no, thank you guys for all you do. And, you know, I, I get to come to your office quite a bit, and, um, you guys are doing a phenomenal job, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, we look forward to seeing you. Oh, good, yeah, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
All right, Madam Mayor, so we're just looking for a motion to approve all items that have not been pulled today.
All right, thank you so much. I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we are gonna start with item, uh, B six, Councilwoman Dour.
Yeah, thank you. I, um, am pulling this item really to, um, highlight one of our young entrepreneurs. I've been so impressed, um, just a little backstory, the, the item before us is for a new business, Rusty Taco, which is going in where the New York Pizza, um, down by Winko is, um, it's a replacement. And some of you may have gotten to know Taylor, but just in case you haven't, there've been a number of news articles written about her. At twenty-two, with the passage of her parents, she inherited, um, their Sonic Enterprises in Carson City and Reno, and I think there is one in Sparks at this point, too. Um, she, um, at twenty-two, she's just finishing college, she decide, she could've sold, you know, and just taken her winnings and, you know, with her degree and gone on a beach somewhere, but instead, she stepped up and began running these, expanded the enterprise, and, um, Sonic is one of the largest franchises in America, I understand, with thirty-five-hundred locations. Um, this particular one in our area started in nineteen ninety-nine, um, and so all of this happened in twenty sixteen. And again, um, she could've just packed it in, but instead, she stepped up at this young age and took it on, and now, um, she continues to expand, um, not only the Sonic brand, but other brands as well, and, and here we have a Rusty Taco. And I just wanted to, um, identify this because it's, um, a lot was written about her in twenty sixteen when this all happened, but here we are some six years later, and I, I know that she's grown and matured and built a, um, a team, and that team includes her brothers, who I believe are in their early twenties as well. Um, so it still remains a family corporation. I'm so impressed with all of our businesses that are here on our agenda and on our many agendas, but I did want to call this out because it's so infrequent that we have an opportunity to recognize what different members of our community are doing, and at different points in their career and different ages, so, um, it is in my ward now, um, with the redistricting, it wasn't, but it is now, so I wanted to take the opportunity to pull it off the agenda and, uh, make a special motion.
All right, can you please?
Yeah, I will. Um, so I would like to move to approve item B six.
All right, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you. Sending it back to you, Councilwoman Dour, or no, I think Councilwoman Breckus, going to you, B eight.
Yeah, this, um, grouping of agenda items involves resolutions, increasing salaries for a number of our folks in our organization who are not covered by bargaining groups. And I just wanted to understand from a financial perspective, because the statute requires when we do financials to, um, show a costing out, and I was just wondering about the costing out, and do these increases, are they calculated into the representation that we are adopting the, for the first time in many years, a balanced budget?
Good morning, Madam Mayor and council members, thank you for the question, Councilmember Breckus. I do have a short presentation that I think will answer your questions, it should take a few minutes, do you mind if I go forward with that?
I don't, um, I just would like to be sure that I get the time to have my specific questions answered, so I'm gonna ask that I am afforded the time.
Okay, let me, just real quick, um, this is a, a short presentation on items B eight through B twelve. As you stated, this is, uh, cost of living adjustment increases for our unrepresented employees, which represents about a hundred and sixty of our members here at the city of Reno. Uh, this, this, these numbers or this budget is incorporated already into our adopted fiscal year twenty-three budget. Because we had been negotiating with eight of our ten labor groups, uh, in, starting in January through May, we already had this on the radar as far as potentially an adjustment that needed to be made to ensure that we, um, have fair, uh, pay practices throughout our organization. So this is, uh, requesting amendments to the resolutions, uh, for our unrepresented hourly municipal court employees, our mid-management and management employees, allowing for a seven percent cost of living, uh, effective July one of twenty twenty-two, and also a four and a half percent for our municipal court judges, which we have four, uh, effective July of, of one of twenty twenty-two. The last page here are the numbers for this fiscal year. You'll see that this is, uh, again, about a hundred and sixty employees at about one point eight million dollars for fiscal year twenty-three. Um, we, of course, collaborate very closely with our finance team, our new Director of Finance, uh, and these memories are within our, um, um, adopted budget.
Okay, and that's, all right, that's for all of these, then?
This is for our unrepresented groups, the hundred and sixty or so employees.
Okay, so, um, question number one is, what is the working definition that we're using as of a budget, a balanced budget? Because when we closed out the budget, you know, through the budget cycle, it was, we've got a balanced budget, but then, when we did the last groupings of bargaining groups,
the definition of a balanced budget?
I'm gonna defer to our city manager, please, on that.
Of course, and Councilmember Breckus, we can also have Ms. Van Buren come up and talk about this. And so, in general, what we're talking about with respect to phasing in some of the hires that were approved in this budget process is more of a cash flow management issue than it is whether or not the budget is balanced. And so, what we mean when we say that the budget is balanced is that we are contributing to all of the funds in the way that the council priorities lay out, and that we are not taking from ending fund balance here. We are not, you know, sort of shortchanging some of our continuing obligations in order to meet the current obligations of the budget.
Okay, and then, 'cause I thought that a balanced budget meant that we didn't have to hold positions during the course of year and phase their opening and hiring, but maybe I was misunderstanding that. And then, the five-year budget projections, have all of these been thrown into that? And the five-year budget projection that I think was gonna go on our financial dashboard? Is that uploaded, and how does, do these commitments play into the debt we've taken on on the general fund and our revenue projections?
I do believe so, but I'm gonna defer to our Director of Finance.
Vicki Van Buren, Director of Finance, thank you for that question, Councilmember Breckus. Yes, we did factor into our projections that were presented to council. We actually have a 10-year projection on our financials for the general fund, and we have projected that, these raises into that, because we were working very closely with HR during that time period where negotiations were going on, and we did anticipate that we were going to have to build in some increases for these groups as those negotiations went on. So, yes, these amounts have been factored in.
Okay, and so, the 10-year projections, is that on the dashboard now?
I'm not sure, but I can get it out there. I know it's on our website under the Finance section. Our entire budget and all the presentations that were given during the budget workshops are out there.
And I have two more questions. Number one is, I understand the base was moved for some of these groups, but we're also at the same time doing a study? So, how do you, you know, if you're going through that exercise of evaluating your base on positions, how does that factor into a study that's, in effect, studying where those positions are in the regional wage scale?
I'd be happy to answer that question. So, you are correct, we are going into a full, comprehensive classification and compensation study. We are currently in the process of reviewing the vendor responses, and we anticipate having all of the data as far as where we sit in the market compared to what our compensation is by around January or February. But we will be working closely with finance team during the budget development process of the upcoming fiscal year to plan for that.
Okay, so the new, the wages-
Councilwoman Breckus, hold on one second. Does anyone else have any questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, go right ahead, Mr. Reese, and then I'm gonna go right back to Councilwoman Breckus.
Thank you. I wanted to, I think, maybe redirect a little bit of the conversation, both with Ms. Van Buren and with Ms. Santoio. And it's really a statement to say, thank you for the work that was done during the negotiating process. I know both of you worked very closely together on a daily basis, hourly, minute by minute, to make many of the collective bargaining agreements that we've already reached happen. At the same time, during those negotiations, it was always understood by this council that after those closed, there would be unrepresented folks who are identified here, a number of different subcategories, including the muni court, the judges, the management, all those, that would essentially, we don't wanna be paying represented groups and unrepresented groups disproportionately or disparately, and so, it was always understood that they would be a related concept. So, this is sort of the nexological extension of that. So, I wanna appreciate you for the work that went into the labor side of it, which results, and then this coming behind that. I think that what the public also is interested in knowing is that we have balanced the budget for the first time in many years. I understood that the balanced budget really was focused on the way in which revenue did not exceed what we spent, and we were not covering for shortfalls through ending fund balance. But I also understand that all cities have vacancy savings that are inure to the benefit of the budget as they go out. Oftentimes, of course, when we have vacancies, they aren't filled immediately. Sometimes, they're not filled because we cannot find the right person to hire for the position. And so, those things are in the budget, and I suppose in any city and any municipal entity, some of the vacancies are a savings vehicle, but they're not intended to be a long-term fix, because of course, we budget for them intending that we have full complement of staff. So, again, I think that the city manager's office and both finance and HR have done a very good job about helping to provide the glide path for not only making sure that our employees are compensated appropriately, that's a part of the process of going through the next phase of the comp and class study, but also just acknowledging that our employees are certainly the most valuable part and component of this organization. So, it really is just sort of a refocusing. I understood each of these items to be in their, in their offering, why they were placed on the consent agenda, but I wanna make sure the public understands that we have, I think, done an outstanding job, and the work that is being done by both of your offices has led to that result. So, again, thank you to both of you, and of course, Ms. Van Buren, I'm very excited for your being named the permanent director in our finance department. Certainly well-deserved, and I think we'll have a long time together to spend in the service of this community, so thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, and thank you, Madam Mayor. So, continuation of my last question is that the base, the bands have moved up about 7% on all of these positions? And so, the question that's gonna be answered through the comp and class is, are our positions, you know, competitive regionally to the peers? And that's shifted with this action?
That's correct. The salary at the time of the study will be considered to be a 7% above where we're at.
So, you wanted, even though you wanted to do a classic comp, you still felt you needed to raise all these 7% on top of the colis, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then, and my last final question, at this point that I know of, is on June first, we received an email, I did and others, from a employee who is also a citizen, and a rec leader. And they work with a very, you know, at-need population, children who are in childcare, and stated some extreme concerns about turnover, work conditions, and other factors, and raised compensation questions, said he understood that there was gonna be a $1 increase for them, but felt that was inadequate. Is that group in these resolutions, these rec leaders, and how, how much are they moving up?
Thank you for the question. I failed to tell you, it's Norma Santoio, your HR Director, but this, that group is not within this group, but council did take action to move them up to $15 an hour, effective July one of 2022. And that is actually something that will be put into, being implemented, and individuals that are impacted will see that in their paycheck on July 22nd.
Okay, I'd like to see more data on that group, and maybe I see it the Civil Service Commission, I don't, I don't know. I just, I wanna understand that, my colleague just talked about a lot of parity, and we have someone here who's a group that seems to be really forgotten often in not getting the resolution benefits, not getting the bargaining group, and then working with a very fragile population that I understand is hard to employ, just like the lifeguards and rec centers. So, I don't need the information now, but I do wanna see, 'cause he said on July one, they thought they were getting a dollar increase, and I'd like to know, you know, what they're getting, thank you.
Okay, real quick, that group, part-time parks and rec employees are also being evaluated to the, through the total comp and classification study. We understand that we need to look at that group.
Thank you.
And Director Schroder is here. We've been meeting and discussing the email that you referenced, and I think Ms. Schroder can give an overview of where we're at on the, on the rec leader issue.
Sure, thank you for the record, Jamie Schroder, Director of Parks and Recreation. We have been having quite a few discussions on what we can do to make ourselves more competitive in that area with that sort of a job classification. So, first step, thank you, was to our council for accelerating the minimum wage increase, getting that done in three years instead of five years. But the next step is to continue the conversations we are having with HR as far as when we do these cost of living increases, making sure we include our temporary and non-career staff. And then, finally, the last step that we're working on right now, which City Manager Thornley was talking about, is our group of regular part-time employees that are working for us at 30 hours a week, so they get 75% of the benefits. There's a whole cascading effect that needs to be worked through mathematically, because we have to make sure that as we increase certain categories, it will impact the start or entry level positions at the 40-hour level. So, lots of discussions and math happening right now, but we hope to be able to come forward with the plan to the council, probably at the mid-year.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, Councilwoman Breckus, why don't you give us a motion?
Move on all these resolutions.
All right, thank you. All right, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you. I believe we are headed to Councilwoman Doer, B fifteen?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted a very brief presentation about this, if you wouldn't mind. And I think it seems like a really great opportunity, so I wanted to highlight it, thank you.
Good morning, Monica Cockham, for the record, Housing Neighborhood Development Manager. I did not prepare a presentation on this, but I can give you just some highlights. Back in May of 2021, we applied for, received, and council accepted a grant from the state of Nevada from the CARES allocation of Emergency Solutions Grant funding. That was about $1.2 million. This early summer, I guess late spring, they had some additional funds that other communities who had been awarded them and didn't spend them in a timely manner were now available for us to ask for. We did a brief analysis of our rental and deposit assistance program as far as what we've been spending and applications in our queue for eligible applicants of this particular allocation. This is the 30% and below AMI, and so, we requested $100,000, knowing that we would be able to spend it in the timeframe that they had. And so, they awarded that to us, and we are asking council to accept that additional $100,000.
So, I just wanted to be clear, thank you for that. So, are we accepting the 1.2 or the additional 100? That's what I wasn't really clear on.
The additional 100. Council already accepted the 1.2, and I believe those funds are either gone or very close to being completely-
So, is the total really like 1.3?
Yes, the total with the additional 100 would be 1.277.
1.2, so the other one was 1.1, maybe?
We're adding 1 point, we're adding 100, and it brings the total to the 1.277.
But we already accepted the 1.1 in a previous item, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then, lastly, on this item, so it's gonna go into the rental and deposit program, which I think is fantastic. And I'm just hoping, and I know we talked briefly yesterday, but I'm hoping that we can figure out a way to use some of these monies to supplement the Section 8. You know, I keep talking to residents, and they keep saying Section 8 is closed. That's the federal funds that supplement rental, and they keep waiting to get on the list, list not open. And I don't know, you know, when we get these grant funds, if we can expand their use to be as similar to the Section 8 as we can. And it may be a timing issue, like these may only be available for three months, and maybe Section 8 dollars are available for a year or something, but I just wonder, as we move forward, if we can look into that as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I'd like to move-
All right, please give us a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to move to accept this item.
All right, thank you, I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good job, Monica.
Thank you, have a great day.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm actually gonna skip around for a minute, 'cause we have people that need to get to, I think, the airport, but we're gonna, I think, we're gonna move to item B thirty-four.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item B thirty-four is simply a resolution donating council funds to the Northern Nevada Children's Cancer Foundation, and they were here this morning and spoke in public comment. And so, I just wanted to make sure that I pulled this item in part because Councilmember Delgado wanted to say a few words, and Madam Mayor, I wanna thank you personally for often ringing the bell.
Bridget's here. Great to see you, Bridget. Bridget and I go way back to access to health care, so I love seeing you here. I just wanted to take the opportunity to match Councilmember Reese's donation, so if you can go back and see if we can collect, work with our liaison to make sure that's part of it. I was there last year, and I was so emotional there with the mayor when we were able to turn those, those lights, and those, it's more than just turning the lights as an opportunity to gather with families, share stories, everyone embrace and kinda care about the struggles and how tough it is to even start to begin that process. And so, just appreciate all the work that they do, and if I can match that, I appreciate that if you're able to take that back with you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, and Madam Mayor, I had a comment as well. Yeah, thank you, and I, too, wanted to do a shout-out. I would've contributed, but we are on a, on a hold, myself, Councilwoman Weber, and the mayor, from contributing council funds, and so, we cannot. But I did wanna just say, this has had particular resonance for me. My one-year-old nephew was recently diagnosed with leukemia and is going through, you know, this incredible treatment program. I think they're about six, seven months into it in San Francisco. And, you know, there's nothing like having something up close and personal to really put the issue into perspective. And more than ever, I understand, you know, what you're doing, why you're doing it, and how hard this is on the families, you know, whatever the age, you know, in this case, one-year-old. But, and you don't know, what is the future for that one-year-old after they get through, you know, this incredible series of treatments? Living in the hospital, not really being able to contact, be in contact with anyone because of being so immunocompromised. So, just a shout-out for what you're doing, and, you know, I hope to donate when the time is right.
Bye, ma'am.
Thank you very much, and I, too, will join my colleagues in matching the $500 contribution. So, I don't know, Nick, or, I know Amy's not in today, so whoever within the sound of my voice can get that rolling. Thank you.
So, thank you, thank you again. Sure, come on up.
Madam Mayor, thank you to my colleagues for the kindness that you're showing to this incredible local group. And I do know that there are some issues at times with the way that council donation funds happen in election cycles. So, I'm gonna increase my donation to acknowledge and support my colleagues, Councilmembers Weber, Doer, and Madam Mayor, each of you with a $500 out of that fund, especially as to Councilmember Doer, who has been touched so personally. And so, I will increase that, and our staff will work on all of the donations writ large. So, it'll be a bit larger than we planned for, but all in good-natured fund.
Well, I just, I wanna thank every one of you, it's absolutely amazing, and our funds are kept in Northern Nevada. 80 cents of every dollar that is donated to the foundation goes to help our families. And especially, like Councilmember Doer was commenting, a lot of that is travel and just support for them while they're going through treatment. So, it's very amazing what we do, and I'm so honored to be able to work for such an amazing foundation. So, we thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Can you state your name for the record?
Oh, yes, Bridget Cole. Thank you.
Cole?
Cole, yes. Thank you.
All right. I believe, Mr. Reese, do you have to give us a motion?
I'll move to approve.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Councilwoman Doer, I'm gonna send it back to you for item B sixteen, I believe.
B sixteen, got it. B sixteen was a really neat opportunity, and I didn't know if Suzanne was around to, or maybe it looks like Carrie perhaps, to speak to this. But what my biggest question was, was to acknowledge that this grant, $60,000 for sustainability, and I just, just hoping someone from the staff could speak to, you know, what specifically it'll be used for. I know it was in our council report, but.
Suzanne? And we will have her come down, she's not here right now. Is Suzanne on Zoom? We'll come back to that.
Yeah, great.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, we're gonna head over to item B nineteen. Councilwoman Breckus.
You know, I was not going to pull this, but this morning, when I came in around a quarter to nine, quarter to 10 or so, I think I saw a memo in my inbox that came in about this item, is that true? And I don't have a hard copy here. It'd be great if you do a memo, you know, the morning of a council meeting, 'cause I don't, I don't, I didn't download it, I can't, sometimes I can't download things. If you could give us a hard copy, that'd be great, just so we know. 'Cause, you know, if you're going to the, through the effort of writing a supplemental memo the morning of a council meeting, I don't wanna sit here as a decider and not know what it, even look at it. I feel like I'm not doing my job. So, could you just tell us what's in that memo and why, you know, how it impacts our decision today?
Yes, I can. For the record, Jeff Voskam, Division Chief Support Services. Good morning, Madam Mayor, City Manager, council members. What's in the memo is basically just an explanation of what we're purchasing and why we're purchasing. So, I'll go through the highlights real quick, if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, I mean, I read the staff report- Yeah, I mean, I read the staff report, I'm just, so I have that base knowledge, I just want to know how it was augmented with.
It was just a further explanation of why we're doing the purchases we're doing. So we're, we're purchasing two engines this year. We did a letter of intent earlier this year in order to capture non-inflationary prices, so we saved some money there. Those two engines are replacing apparatus that are 17 and 18 years old. We're also replacing two brush engines, those are 15 years old. Again, we did a letter of intent, worked with the manufacturers to save some money there. And then we're buying an additional ambulance, obviously for the issues we're having now with supporting REMZA, and we don't, our current ambulance is 22 years old and is really on its way out, so this will help us to do that. Unfortunately, now with way, supply chain issues are, and chassis and chips, I'm sure you've read about, those turnaround times and those lead times now are now up to 24 months. So by being able to do some of the things we've done, we've cut that down to almost a year.
Okay.
And that's why we're taking this opportunity.
Are you pivoting off of the approved apparatus program? Did you?
This is all through the apparatus purchase program.
Okay, so it's specific to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I'll move.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, heading over to item B-23, Councilwoman Breckus, and then I believe we'll go back to B-16. Thank you. So this is a contract for fire and security detection systems in a number of our facilities, I think it's multi-year, and I just wanted to know if 528 West First Street, known as the Paul Revere Williams Christian Scientist Building, sometimes known as the Lear, is included for this safety measure?
For the record, Frank Gavera, representing the new Maintenance Operations Department. So that building is not included in this, that has no power, it has no infrastructure currently.
Yeah, well, we're trying to make sure that's a very safe building, and it's one that's not occupied. What's, you know, why, why didn't we include it in there? Because it didn't have power?
Our current plan, we have that building, is we have the clean and safety team that patrol that area. My people patrol that area daily.
Yeah, okay, well, maybe that issue will be coming before the body soon, but it would seem to me, if we're trying to protect our assets, that's an asset, I, I think, you know, is there an ability to add it on once we?
Definitely look into that.
Could do that, okay. And I'll just take the opportunity to let the council know that, just in the last week, The New York Times did mention the Paul Revere Williams Building with a reference that the city of Reno, the fate of one of his jewels, because there's been a, there's an exhibit at the Nevada Museum of Art, one of his jewels is in the fate of the Reno City, of the city of Reno. So that's Reno in the news, and my liaison will be introducing that article in the record for this, so we don't lose thought that it's a building in, whose fate is in our hands, and securing it while it's vacant and waiting its next step is important. And also, I'll make sure that copies get into each of the council members' office. Thank you.
Understood, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Breckus. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're going to send it back to B-16, I believe, I'm sorry, we're jumping around a little bit, because I think we were waiting for Suzanne. Okay, Suzanne, is she on Zoom? Okay. 16, we jumped around, sorry, everyone.
Hey Suzanne, thanks for joining us. I thought this, since this is a first for the city, you know, per your memo, it's a first of the kind for the Reno, a first of its kind for Reno by starting the conversation around healthy homes, community engagement, energy efficiency, and new technologies. I just wondered if you could tell us how this $60,000 grant's going to be used, and over what timeframe, and what do you think the result will be? And, and you know, why are we doing this?
Sure, so Suzanne Gruneman for the record, Sustainability Program Manager. So I applied for funds through the Urban Sustainability Directors Network. We were one of four cities chosen to receive funds this year through the 2022 Innovation Fund for mid-sized U.S. cities. And what this will do is most of the funds are going directly to Rebuilding Together Northern Nevada, and it's going to cover the cost difference between traditional furnace units and electric heat pumps for the clients that they serve, and then also cover the cost of the ductwork. These are traditional heat pumps, so they will use the, or excuse me, yes, traditional heat pumps, so they use the existing ductwork, that's not being changed, but they won't be efficient unless we also address that. And that's something that Rebuilding Together Northern Nevada wouldn't have otherwise been able to address with some of their funding sources. So we're going to step in, it is a pilot program, but the, ultimately, the outcome is to prove the, the public-private partnership and that we can make little investments like this that make a big difference. So it is a pilot program, we're hoping that once it ends, it's a one-year program, that we can expand it and look for other funding opportunities or other partnerships.
All right, thank you so much, and I just, kudos to you for being so creative and outwardly looking to get a grant like this, and I think this really speaks, you spoke to in the memo about development of a heat map, and I, could you just explain what that is for all of us?
Oh, yes, thank you for reminding me about that part. So part of the funding is to set aside funds for us to hire an intern, and what we want to do is take the data and look at the homes that we're targeting, and then look at the potential for future homes using that heat map data, so where are essentially our hottest areas, so that after this concludes, we can actually have a targeted focus on, on areas and homes that we should look at in the future.
Right, and I just read a national article, I think it was yesterday, about the inequities that people see in communities in terms of where it's hot and where it's not, and I think this is all coming into our collective consciousness with these huge heat waves that are going across the country, the haves and the have-nots, those that have air conditioning, those that don't, those that have cooling centers, those that don't. So I, I'm really pleased that you're using the heat map to help prioritize use of the grants. So thank you very much, and with that, Madam Mayor, I'd like to move to approve item B-16.
All right, thank you, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe, where are we at, Madam Clerk? B-19?
So we are, I believe, on item 20, B-25.
B-25, okay. Take it away, I believe that, is that you, Councilwoman Breckus? Yeah, I have questions about this. This is a reimbursement agreement with the RTC for the micro-mobility project on Fifth Street and Virginia Street, and, you know, I was not aware we were doing one on Fifth Street, and there's a inconsistency in the staff report. I think the figures show that the Fifth Street one's western boundary is Keystone Avenue, but then the staff report mentions Vine Street, so wondering about that. But two, on the study for both streets, usually when you do a, a study in a setting like this, you have a question you're trying to solve, then you have a methodology to evaluate outcomes, and then you have kind of proposals of what your study could lead you where, and I'm just wondering, because a lot of people have raised this to my attention, what is the posed question with these two studies? What is the methodology to evaluate whether or not this is, you know, why are we doing this? Where are we going? What is success? What is failure? What are the options? I haven't seen that, and if it's somewhere, you can point it to me, I'd appreciate that, and I don't think I know who you are, so if you'd introduce yourself like staff always does, I'd, welcome aboard.
Thank you for the question. Katie Harrison, Senior Civil Engineer in the Public Works Department, for the record. I have a few slides describing the pilot project that this reimbursement agreement would support, if you would like to see a brief presentation.
Sure, sure, but I'm going to ask then, because we have rules that very much formalize our ability to make questions, I want to make sure my questions are, that are specific or answered, so I'm going to ask for a pause then, at this moment of my time, while she does her presentation that she's prepared. Thank you.
Again, Katie Harrison, Senior Civil Engineer with the Public Works Department, for the record. I have a brief presentation this morning on the reimbursement agreement between RTC and the city of Reno for our micro-mobility pilot project. All right, the city of Reno implemented a new pilot project this year to introduce micro-mobility-specific infrastructure to downtown Reno. Micro-mobility includes a range of small lightweight vehicles such as bikes and scooters. Using micro-mode-specific infrastructure, such as buffered lanes, protected intersections, bike signals, and more, the pilot project connects Vine Street to Evans Avenue via Fifth Street, and downtown to Midtown via Virginia Street. The goals of the pilot project include introducing different micro-mode-specific features to our community, soliciting feedback, and collecting data that will help inform both the city and RTC in applying this type of infrastructure in our community in the future. It will also provide additional data for the Virginia Street placemaking study and RTC's active transportation plan update. The city requested RTC's partnership in developing and implementing the pilot project, including import, input and support on the design, data collection and interpretation, and cost sharing for materials and contract labor, which this reimbursement agreement provides. The project was designed and set up over two months between April and May of this year, and we have constructed over two miles of single-protected micro-mode lanes, over a third a mile of two-way micro-mode track, 100 bike symbols, 750 delineators, three bike signals, and enough green paint to cover an NBA-sized basketball court. We utilized a contractor to install the features along Fifth Street and the south half of Virginia, and our own city's Maintenance and Operations Department installed the features along Virginia between First and Fifth Street, and they did a great job. This inter-local cooperative agreement allows the RTC to reimburse the city for a portion of the costs to construct the improvements, an amount not to exceed $400,000. The total cost was originally estimated to be approximately $700,000. We are continually tracking labor and material costs, and to date, they're roughly $500,000. We're anticipating another 100 for maintenance and removal of the infrastructure, and RTC has previously approved the agreement. So here's the project's schedule. As I mentioned, to date, we've completed design and construction. We opened the pilot to the public on June 15th, and we're currently soliciting community feedback through an online survey. We're also collecting data on the numbers and speeds of vehicles and micro modes that are using the facilities during the pilot project. So far, the feedback through the surveys from micro-mode users has been mainly positive with increased feelings of safety due to, to increased separation from vehicles. The main criticism received so far has been from public traveling downtown in automobiles due to the decreased number of lanes. We're continuing to reach out to the community and various community groups to encourage that feedback, and we will update and provide a recommendation on the project in November, and we will continue to analyze the data for potential use of this type of infrastructure on projects in the future. And so here's my shameless plug for the community to get out and interact with the features, and please provide feedback, reno.gov/engage, look for the micro-mobility pilot project link. And so with that, we, staff recommends that council approve the agreement with RTC to reimburse for a portion of the cost in an amount not to exceed $400,000.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Can we please have the timer up with the remaining time for Councilwoman Breckus? Yeah, thank you for that presentation. A few follow-up questions. The Vine Street to Keystone connection, because, you know, these, these connections are really always very critical.
Correct, and so between Vine and Keystone on Fifth serves as a transition between the micro-mode-specific lanes back to the existing infrastructure that's in place, so it's a transition area.
Okay, so we'll figure out how to, how to get, deal with Keystone when we get there at some point?
Correct.
Okay, and then secondly, though, I heard a lot about feedback and data, and, you know, surveys, self-selected, particularly, you know, asking people to get back, that's, you know, that's good, it's not scientific, it's, you know, it's very self-selected, and I know I'm talking to an engineer, so in terms of the question you've posed and the analysis through data, do you, have you all gotten as far as looking at, you know, are you looking at counts, for example? Are you looking at crashes? Are you looking at speeds? Are you doing movement analysis through photometrics? All those sort of things?
We are, great question. RTC has an agreement with UNR. We are collecting LiDAR data, so sensors along the corridor at specific intersections, both pre and post-pilot project, will analyze all of the items that you mentioned. Vehicle speed, conflict analysis, and locations of the users within the corridor.
Okay, so we'll see that too in November, when we're asked, I propose, I understand, is this a permanent thing? Is it a pull-it-out thing?
Yes.
Is it a redesign thing? Are those the three options, maybe?
That, that is, that's correct. We'll be back in November.
Thank you, and I apologize if I missed all this in the record, but now I'm up to speed, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. First of all, thank you to you and to Carrie and the teams both here at the city of Reno and Public Works, especially in the roadway, roadway team and RTC, because this project, I think, originally arose sort of prior to Bike Month, and it was the opportunity for us to step out a bit in faith. I apologize, my mic seems to be fairly loud, but it was the opportunity for us to step out a bit in faith. And while I appreciate planners and engineers who have a brain and a mindset that talks about metrics and deliverables and tests and studies and LiDAR and the like, I also think that as a city, we oftentimes have to be a bit more nimble in our approach to trying and doing new and improved things, and sometimes those things don't come about by a carefully crafted study, and they also, the results are not necessarily proven out through that process. Here, I think, a lot of the credit goes to Madam Mayor, because she really wanted to see greater public safety for our bicycling community, our micro-mobility community, and oftentimes, I think, those are things that happen because citizens stop you on the street, and they say, why don't we have this? Why aren't we looking at this? Or they send us pictures of examples of these kind of micro-mobility projects in other communities, and that has been a lot of the feedback that I've gotten. It's somewhat anecdotal, it may not be captured in your survey, but oftentimes, people will stop me, I, I know that one person interacted with me on Twitter and said, you know, they had been in Europe for the summer, I guess, traveling, and they came back to see the project had been launched, and they were basically amazed that the city of Reno was taking this, undertaking this effort, which they thought had been a long time lacking, and now here it was. And so I just want to, again, commend the team for stepping out a bit in the faith and vision aspect of it, because that is not often easy to measure or to check in on a particular measurable. And so everybody in your team, from the launching of it through the rollout, and even today as you collect the data, and as Gail looks at it, really is responsible for something that I think is going to make improvements throughout the city, because I think as, in part, as I've talked to, say, Kai Plaskin, who I spoke to yesterday about this project, you know, there was some hesitancy, because folks were not aware of the project at the outset or how it came about, but now are very supportive and are having conversations with their members and across the community, in which what they're saying is not only, A, do they like it, but where are we going to replicate it next? And so I know that our new Director of Public Works, Ms. Kerekowski, and City Engineer, she's wearing two hats now, very exciting, and I have been talking about, you know, we talked this week about an area around Reno High School, we talked about an area now a number of times around Holcomb, where there are some opportunities. There's always opportunity, but as the mayor, I think, is fond of saying, when you're not trying and trying innovations and you're afraid of failing, that's when the city doesn't take the visionary step to do the things it's doing. So thank you for that. Thank you, the mayor, for really leading on this specific project. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other members have any questions or comments? Councilmember Delgado, followed by Councilwoman Doer.
Councilmember Delgado, followed by Councilwoman Doan.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I'll be quick to jump on, piggyback on much of what my Councilmember Reese has already stated. I think another thing that I'm hearing, which is, which I'm really, really proud of that we're doing, is we're being proactive with respect to putting in infrastructure. We understand the pedestrian safety pieces of it all, but the large amount of residential properties and buildings that are coming forth in front of us to get ahead of it with understanding how do we do it even better is monumental. For a number of times, as a government agency, we're always reactive. It's pretty awesome to be kind of proactive, right? The demographics, the entire community downtown is changing. There's going to be a lot more residential, there's going to be a lot more kids, a lot more families, and to now think about safety and how we can incorporate some of that, that's what I get excited about, so to start to feel, and start to see, so I just want to thank the council. I thank you, of course, to the team, City Reno, for thinking about these things. And again, lessons learned, we'll continue to make progress and changes, and that's what we're all about, but again, the proactive pieces of it, I think, are really, really exciting, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Doan?
Yeah, thank you, and I just wanted to, the opposite of science is one person's anecdotal experience, right? But I do want to share that when the scooters first came in, my world became a terror zone. I had groups of four scooters in my lane facing me, you know, headed for a crash, crashing behind me in intersections. It was super scary, and I had kind of, at that point, said that I won't even be able to drive downtown, and I had changed my driving speed from like 25 down to like 5 or 10, because I was, I didn't know where they were coming from. You implementing, Carrie, you implementing this project while it was confusing during the construction period, for sure. I am no longer experiencing anything like that, that I did in the first few, the month, first month, let's say, that the scooters were introduced. I don't feel like I'm going to kill someone every time I go get in my car downtown. So I just, I'm very grateful that we're experimenting with this, and it's already changed my personal life. I'm not afraid to drive downtown now, right now. I love, you've used some different styles, I noticed, to separate the lanes, and I particularly love the ones that are almost artistic, you know, that include the aluminum circles. They're so attractive, and they actually add something when it's just a straight, kind of, you know, pole. It looks very officious and, I don't know, kind of very regulation and not as attractive. And when you use these more attractive dividers, you know, they may not be, like, they're not going to stop a car, but they are definitely a visual barrier. I think the more we can do that, it's going to actually add to the ambiance of our city, not just be like, you know, here's a stoplight, or, you know, something very official. So thank you for what you're doing, I'll quit right there, but I feel much safer driving downtown, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, looking for a motion?
I'll move.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, congratulations.
Thank you.
On your first presentation, it was great.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, we are now moving to item, I believe, B-26, Madam Clerk, correct? Okay, perfect. Okay, so actually even related to 25, which is the, or no, 27 and 26 are related to a sewer capacity improvement project in the Lakeside area, which is adjacent to or complimentary to one of our under-process neighborhood street rehabilitation projects right now. That seems to be laboring.
Thank you for, Councilwoman Breckus, for highlighting this project and letting us highlight some of the improvements that we're doing to our neighborhoods. For the record, John Simpson, Senior Civil Engineer in Capital Projects, I have a brief presentation to just kind of highlight some of the things that are going on in there, but today, this item that we have before you is the award of the neighborhood street improvements and the Lakeside sewer improvements, so it's the construction award for this project. We have seen a substantial investment in this neighborhood. So earlier this month, Tamwa just completed the majority of the water main replacements in that neighborhood. We've seen, our utility division came through with a storm drain improvement project earlier this season. We're just kind of queued in line, so I know that you've mentioned that it might have taken a little bit to get to this point, but we're just kind of queued in line with the other improvements that are going and the other investments in this neighborhood.
Well, let me just ask my specific questions, and just for everyone's knowledge, this was, you know, there's a lead time on these projects, and then we redistricted, so this is now Ward 1, and I'm getting very acquainted with what's going on there. So you always plan to put this sewer line in as part of this effort?
So the sewer main that is along Lakeside Drive between, or adjacent to Virginia Lake, this line is actually a pinch point. Our utilities division has done extensive work modeling our sewer system here in the city, and this location was identified and is, has been highlighted in our capital improvement program to take care of this pinch point in the system. So just downstream of this location, we have a 12-inch sewer, it downsizes to a 10-inch and then upsizes back into a 15-inch, so we are, have a capacity issue in this main in the section, so that's why it's being replaced.
Well, my real question here is, and I know we're at an award point, but I've got three neighborhood projects going on in my ward, and they're not going as smoothly as they have. It's like, one week one, one week the other, one week the other, and I understand that your division lost some staff and has hired new folks, and I'm sure the contractors and the people we hire to, you know, like in 27 to do the oversight are also struggling, and I just, I just want to know and understand, as we embark upon a new one, are we just running at a real ability where we're just not doing, you know, we're having a hard time addressing issues in the field as they come up? Because I'm seeing that, and I'm hearing it from residents.
Thank you for your concern, Councilwoman Breckus. Our staff does everything we can to address the concerns of the neighbors in the neighborhood and what we're doing. I feel that our staff is doing an excellent job this season, taking care of our projects. We are nearing completion with our Swope neighborhood project. Our Humboldt North and South projects are ongoing and I think are moving along well. Every construction project has its challenges. This year, we've had a few, but we work hard to work with our neighborhood constituents to do what we can to make it as painless as possible.
And this will close out the season, then, for us?
So this Watt project is the last project for this, and we are anticipating having this, the street portion of this completed this fall. Some of the sewer work will extend into the winter and be completed in early spring.
Okay, I have one other follow-up comment I'd like to make, but I see I'm out of time at this point. Thank you.
Madam Mayor? Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to do a shout-out. I know there's always challenges with construction projects, but what I saw from your team when this was a part of Ward 2 was a tremendous amount of outreach as part of this project at the very, very beginning, and then those were group meetings, you know, you held them with me at Moana Nursery, then you went door-to-door, and every single house, is my understanding, you met with the people, what kind of sidewalk changes would there be, curb gutter, how would it affect their landscaping and so on, and I just, I have to tell you how much I appreciate the amount of work that's gone into this. And I know this area, I mean, I took pictures of the roads, the roads were in terrible shape, they were, had been patched and with the tar so many times, you know, it was just falling. It was, it basically needed a rebuild at that point, you can't put any more pavement on top of that. So while there are challenges with all the construction projects, and I'm sure there will be, you know, fingers crossed, though, with Moana, the police station, everything that we do is going to have challenges, whether it's supply, labor, a redesign, an unexpected, you know, environmental issue, that's always part of construction. So I just, I want to say thank you, I feel for Councilwoman Breckus that there's so much going on in your ward right now, but this project was very long in the coming, you know? We would have hoped to have done it even four years ago, five years ago, or even longer ago, but I'm just glad we're doing it now, and it's very painful to go through these projects. It affects parking and driving, you know, detours, you know, interruption of services, it's never easy on the people, but once it's over, it's kind of like surgery, once it's over, you end up feeling better typically, hopefully, the patient doesn't die, but actually recovers and feels better, and we kind of put that difficult period behind us and just take joy in the fact, now we'll have sidewalks, you know, in an area that had no sidewalks, now we'll have better configured roads, you know, and so on, and now this pinch point has really impacted any kind of infill development, and you had this issue too, Councilwoman Breckus, when I know there was a pinch point on a sewer plant that affected a growth project, which had to be dealt with before they could do the infill project. So, you know, I'm just really glad you're on it, and thank you for, I'll mirror the junior mayor, thank you for your service.
Councilwoman Doan, we do appreciate your effort too with our constituents and the staff and meeting with the public when we are going through that process, too.
Yeah, thank you.
Great job, fantastic job.
Madam Mayor, if I might too, I, you know, I think everybody has touched on some of the frustrations that come with extensive construction. I certainly know that when we practiced the original presentations for these projects, I complained at Director Kosky long and loud that she's going to mess up my approach to Little League for the year, but, you know, I do want to say, I'm up here actually writing right now thank you notes to some of the Capital Projects engineering and public works staff, because they have done such a fabulous job navigating some of the challenges with supply chain issues and some of the unforeseen circumstances that have come up once we've opened up the roads, and so I do want to say into a microphone, John, Steph has done a fabulous job with these projects.
Thank you.
Great. I said, Skyler, whenever they leave, just say, thank you for your service. He really, literally took it to the heart. He was very serious about that. I loved it, I loved it. He was just adorable. Loved him. Great job. Any more questions? Councilwoman Reese? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Simpson, thank you for the presentation and for the information and update. You know, it's always one of those things, I think, that goes without saying, sometimes in the summer, our state flower becomes cones, and orange cones become the norm, but your team has done an exceptional job, and every one of them, from folks who are working on the ground to people who are communicating about the projects, to people managing them, they all really deserve a great deal of credit. Over the weekend, I think I got trapped behind one on King's Row, one over by Reno High School, one over by Virginia Lake, and, and gosh, you're just managing a lot, but we have a short window at times because of the nature of the weather that we deal with, and what I will say anecdotally is that the citizens have been very appreciative of the work that's been done, and no, no one wants to live through a remodel or construction zone, that's not anyone's, what brings them joy, but so proud of all that's going on and for the team's efforts, so thank you for that. I think they're moving as fast as humanly possible and as fast as supply chains will allow, and at the end of the day, it continues to be, you know, an amazing accomplishment by your team. Thanks for letting me go out with a couple of your teams to see the projects as they unfold. I've had the privilege, of course, this summer, of visiting with your team during a couple of luncheons, and we're doing some fun things. All of those things are just to say thank you, it really is, to say thank you for people who are putting the hard work in, you know, these hands aren't doing the work that you all are doing, so I can only say thank you from the bottom of my heart and appreciate all that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be quick. I just want to acknowledge, as my colleagues, thank you too, Public Works and everyone that does the work in our communities and our neighborhoods. Honestly, the professionalism, the thoughtfulness, just knowing that we got to get in there and get things done. If, and this is a call to any ward member, if you're having, if you feel like there's so many projects going on in your ward, I will take the project to my ward. I am more than happy to join and knock on those doors in my community, get some projects going on, but I know collectively, equitably, we want to make sure we go through the cycle and get everyone some love, but I'd be more than happy to take those off, you guys, and our burden. My community ultimately understands that we've got to go through some of those trying times, but they also acknowledge and appreciate the amount of just work that needs to be done gets done, and there's someone who appreciates it once it's done, so thank you to your team. Appreciate you guys very much.
We may take you up on that offer.
Madam Mayor? Councilwoman Breckus? Yeah, and I think, you know, this is very operational, we have a real good program, and last year, or maybe in the spring before, we had a lot of focus and meetings on the one that we thought was going to be difficult, the Humboldt one, which has actually been the easiest one, but, you know, Sunday, I was on California Avenue, and the barriers were absolutely unsecured through the whole corridor. There was a large tipped-over sign, unsecured, scratching cars, and I, I mean, we do the contract for the design management, and I would think Friday night, there would be someone making sure that we have a safe environment when those projects are closed up for the weekend. That's just the feedback, because I know everyone's, you know, what is she saying? This is what I'm saying. Yesterday, I was on the phone for an hour with a couple who have already been to their house, a block from where this assignment is, and they were told, like everyone else, here's your chance to do your sewer lateral. They did their sewer lateral, they used a technique that is approved by the Public Works Department, and about a month later, the city came in and cut that lateral and put a storm drain on top of it, and they have a claim into the city attorney's office, they have insurance companies there, it's causing them a lot of duress emotionally. I'm representing those concerns. I was in Swope with neighbors, and there were some issues, there were some contact issues, there were some staffing issues, haven't heard a thing for two months on those. I just, you know, I know staffing is very difficult, it's probably difficult on the people we hire, too. I just, you know, if this contractor's out here, I just want to make sure that they're being held accountable to be doing their jobs, too, and that we have the bandwidth to get these projects done, and I am very concerned about this couple that I think is getting kind of, you know, blockaded by a legitimate claim that they have, and the answer is, will just sue us. This is a couple who's having a lot of emotional distress about their sewer lateral, just a block from where we're doing this, so I want to make sure that, you know, as they see their, the rest of their neighborhood under construction for the next six months, that their emotional stress that they're feeling is dealt with and daylight that. So I'm willing to approve, I'm able to approve this, but, and these comments, these case studies are not in any way a attack on the work that everyone's doing. I know everyone's doing the work, I just want to make sure that everyone is not getting pressured to do more work than they can comfortably do and serve the people out in the neighborhoods. Thank you. Okay, thank you. So is that your motion?
Yes.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Wow, I think that was the longest consent agenda.
Oh, Madam Mayor, we still have one more item, we've got B-33.
Madam Mayor, thank you so much.
I don't remember consent ever being that long. Go ahead, Councilwoman Reese, I'm so sorry.
You're okay. B-33 is an item from the Council Fund's general donations to the Latino Arte and Culture Festival that happened. I want to really just give a shout-out to our staff who really bridged the gap in a lot of the planning aspects and the, actually, the execution, although it was put on by an outside group. It was a group that was not as familiar with how to pull off a successful event, and really, the credit goes to our staff. Jenica Noemi, Ms. Turney, all were involved in making sure that this project was an exceptional one. I do take very seriously the support of our festivals and our engagement opportunities. This one in particular was involved a fair amount of the Latino community here in Reno, and it just is important that all members of our community have opportunities to celebrate cultural heritage, music, the food of their own community, and so although this might be a one-time opportunity because it's passed now and they'll have to, each festival generally will have to rise and fall on their own, I just think it's important to highlight it, and I think it was a very successful event, so I'll move to approve.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, I believe that is a wrap-up of all our consent items. I do want to point out, I think staff is doing an amazing job with their presentations. You guys are rock stars, looking great, so I just want to point out, and hopefully, you know, your level of stress when you come up here, just, you know what? You guys are just doing a really, really good job, so I just wanted to let you know. Don't stress out up here, we're rooting for you. I'm looking at you and I'm smiling, you're doing amazing, so thanks, you guys, honestly, I'm impressed. Okay, back to you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're moving into our public hearing items. So we are opening item C one.
Okay, thank you so much. We will now open the public hearing, so make sure that, um, the record reflects that, Madam Clerk. Um, has proper notice been given and any correspondence received?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
Okay, thank you so much. So I'm gonna hand it right over to you, Norma, it's all you.
Okay. Hello again.
Hello.
Norma Santoyo, your HR Director. Good morning, Madam Mayor and council members. I am going to present C one, C two, and C three together. And this is bringing it home with our collective bargaining groups. Uh, so, kicking off, one of the groups that we were negotiating, one of the eight, starting in January and we finalized in May, is our Reno Fire Department Administrators Association. Uh, we were waiting for their member ratification process to finalize, uh, but this is formally presenting it before you. What we're asking for is your consideration of a two-year agreement with this group, which would include an eight percent cost of living adjustment effective July one of 2022. And also in the first year, we do have some other, um, economic items. One of them is that the, the group did agree to allow Medicare-eligible retirees to move away from the self-funded insurance plan, uh, into a Medicare-coordinated plan, which really takes care of both the retiree and also the financial sustainability of our health plan. In addition, we are, um, asking for authorization to provide this group with a five percent instructor incentive in year one. And then for the second year of the term, a three percent cost of living adjustment. Moving on to the, uh, items C two and C three, as you recall, uh, our two groups that were not at the table were Local Thirty-nine Supervisory and Local Thirty-nine Non-supervisory. This represents about four hundred of our employees, our frontline boots on the ground to keep our city running. Um, they have a current CBA that runs through June of 2023. In that CBA, they were expecting a two and a half percent cost of living adjustment in July, um, based on what other groups received and what's been happening with our labor market, we're requesting an additional four and a half percent for this group effective July one, which moves them up to parity with the rest of the groups at seven percent. Um, in exchange for this added increase, um, the group has agreed to extend their collective bargaining agreement an additional year through June of 2024, for, uh, an additional two and a half percent in that year too. Uh, to be on par with our RAPG, uh, groups, we are also adjusting their vacation accrual by half an hour in year one, an additional half an hour in year two. So, the numbers right here before you. Um, in total, these three groups in year one will be about $2.4 million and in year two, about $3.8 million. Uh, year one is included in the adopted budget and then year two, um, similar to other groups. So I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
All right, go ahead, Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so Article forty-six for the, um, the fire, um, administrators is titled Staffing Levels Specialist Assignment Incentive. And it has, I think, six sub, subcategories. The one that's getting amended is about staffing. And the final sentence in that section says, used to read, "Whenever the city increases the number of companies or geographical areas covered by the battalion line, by the line battalion chiefs, they agree to negotiate the impacts of the bargaining, to the bargaining unit's members." Now, what we're gonna say is, "Whenever the city increases the number of stations by a factor of five, that is, for every fifth station, they agree to add a battalion and the corresponding battalion chief." So essentially, we're binding ourselves to a staffing level as we add stations.
Thank you for that question, Norma Santoyo, HR Director. I was looking behind me to see if, uh, our fire chief was present, but he is not here. Um, the way it looks, okay, the way the language is written, it does not, so the staffing levels is a City of Reno employer discretion, that does not give it away, but what we do uh, agree is that any impacts to the workforce do have to be negotiated. Um, City Manager, it looked like you had something to say, I'm trying to answer the question clearly for you, but maybe you can help me out.
I think you're doing a fabulous job, right? So the staffing level, the quality of the services, uh, is a management right and that's something that rests here with this body. I think it's important, when we talk about companies versus stations, understand that a company is just the staffing level on a vehicle, right? So that's four, or in the case of a truck, five, um, personnel. Uh, there can be more than one company at a station and so this is a, this is a positive advancement for the city and our position.
Now, I don't interpret it that way. I interpret it that the language as it is says, "We'll, you know, discuss with them," but here, it says, "Whenever the city increases the number of stations by a factor of five, they agree to add a battalion and the corresponding battalion chief." So to me, that reads that we are saying we are adding a battalion and a battalion chief for every increment of five stations. Now I know that I've been on the Reno City Council for ten years and we haven't added a station. We've been lucky to stop the ones that were closed during the downturn.
Yeah.
So it's far out there, but I am not willing to commit to a bargaining group that ties a staffing level, as I interpret it. Um, what's next? The engineers say on every five hundred road miles, you're gonna staff, you know, Local Thirty-nine is gonna have a new street sweeping battalion and the RAPG engineers get five new Civils? No, I'm not gonna do that to future council members. So, um, Chief, maybe you can help me say I'm reading it wrong, but I think it's giving away some management rights.
But I think the chief will come up here and, and he'll, uh, put some clarity on this, but I, I think it's important and, and Chief, I'd appreciate it, sort of for my own edification, uh, if you would explain how adding a B C, when we talk about adding, you know, at least five truck companies enhances our tactical capabilities in terms of running multiple incidents at the same time.
But, Mr. Manager, I don't dispute that it enhances our capacity, but I just dispute that if we don't have the wherewithal and the council is bound to increase our capacity when we have other obligations and needs, financial circumstance, whatever, I want that authority to rest with the council.
Okay, hold on, Councilwoman Breckus. Does anyone have any questions? Councilwoman Reese, go ahead.
Thank you. I suppose my question is really for you, Chief Cochran. Um, I understood it a little differently than Councilmember Breckus. Um, I also understood, um, kind of the safety component that was built into it. And so my focus is less on tying the hands of anybody and more on making sure our community is safe. So would you help us to understand the ask? Because as I understood it, it's an easy ask. Um, and so it's a, it's also a fix that I think is supported by, um, sort of the fire science behind it. So maybe you can speak to that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Reese, uh, and Manager Thornley for your comments as well, because I think you're, you're both right on. And this is something that I support. I talked with Director Santoyo about it before we committed to it. It's really the best practice and, and safety is always job one. When you're adding five stations, and just to put some numbers on it, you're adding at least twenty personnel and you need personnel, you need the manager, you need the battalion chief to manage that. It's like when we open an engine. We don't staff an engine, we commit staffing an engine with a captain, an operator, and two firefighters. That is the standard practice and, and a best practice. And that's really the goal here, that when we're going to expand that staffing, if we're expanding staffing, by definition, we have the resources, we have the personnel, we have the finances to do so, adding one more person to increase the safety and tactical capability is, uh, I'll say to get that best practice.
And Chief Cochran, just so that the, uh, public is aware, the Reno Fire Department Administrators Association, who are those folks?
Those are the battalion chiefs, it's kind of the, the umbrella we throw.
And how many of them are there?
There's eleven if you include the fire marshal, twelve, I'm sorry, if you include our, uh, new EMS chief, Cindy Green.
Yeah, these people are doing incredible work for the city and so I want to make sure that you convey my thanks to them. They often are not here in chambers, they're not as vocal as, um, the line folks, but they are doing incredible work. And so I just want to convey my thanks to them through you, so they understand that they, they are working very hard, especially during this fire season. I mean, I, I see fires pop up routinely in our, the news that the manager provides to us each day. And so thank you to them for the continued service to this city and, and certainly, i- it's sort of no priority for me to support the contract that's in front of us today.
I appreciate that and I will convey that. And I would also add that, um, they do tremendous work, as you mentioned, um, with less. We, you've heard me say it in this room, we've been doing more with less. You know, the ratio really should be higher and I know it was a collective group, we're all working on that, so I appreciate the comments.
All right, any other questions? There are none. Um, Councilwoman Breckus, you were a minute over, so you have two minutes.
No, I won't be making a motion even though I pulled this and our pattern is for the person who pulls it, well, to make a mo-, well, no, actually, this isn't consent. So I won't be making a motion, but the motion's on the table, I'll address it.
If you had any more questions?
No, thank you.
No more questions?
Move to approve staff recommendations.
Sorry.
I have a motion. And I have a second and I'm gonna send it to Councilwoman Breckus for discussion.
Yeah, I won't be voting for the motion. This is, you know, I've been on here almost ten years and this is the first bargaining agreement I have never opposed, ever opposed. And I oppose it because, not under financial matters, I think when we go good faith and financial and the financial answers come from staff, we're there. But this is an abrogation of authority and it is absolutely the wrong place to embed a staffing level. The, the, the way to address your growth considerations, and this is related to growth, adding a fifth fire station, is clearly outlined in our master plan and the implementation steps that should go on with that. And should be enacted through our land development processes because, you know, this is growth-related. And so this is absolutely the wrong way to approach growth issues and it will hurt the city in the back, in the end. It's really a falsehood, if you think about it. It's a falsehood because when are we gonna add five stations? Can't even staff the ones we have, but we continue to adopt policies that put us in our, and spread our coverage very thin and can't even staff the ones we have. Not good.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Next one. Okay. Madam Clerk, sending it right back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just to be clear, that was a motion, one motion for items C one, C two, and C three?
No.
Yes.
They opened all items together.
Yes.
I think the public hearing requirements for, um, because these are mandated by state law to be public hearings, correct? Have to go motion by motion for each one. Mr. City Attorney?
Just for clarification, how about specific motion on each one?
I'm sorry, you're right.
Madam Mayor, I'm prepared on C two to move for the approval.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Which, which one's C two? I'm sorry, I don't know.
Local Thirty-nine non-supervisory.
Okay.
The local Thirty-nine, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Mayor, on as to C three, the local Thirty-nine supervisory unit, I'm prepared to move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. So now we're moving on to item C four. A bill introduction to be read by the city attorney.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm gonna send it to Mr. Carl Hall and then I, um, Madam Clerk, I have to step out, so I will be joining you on the phone and, uh, Vice Mayor will be stepping in. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. C four. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Madam Vice Mayor, we do have, uh, we did receive one letter of correspondence in support of this item. Additionally, we will need the city attorney to read the bill number.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Ordinance introduction, bill number seven-two-one-two, case number LDC twenty-two-dash-zero-zero-zero-four-four, Coral Academy rezoning. Ordinance to amend the Coral Academy specific plan district, SPD to allow for public schools in addition to private schools. Plus or minus two-point-nine-five acre project site is located northwest of the intersection of Reno View Drive and Sky Mountain Drive. Site has a master plan, land use designation of suburban mixed use, SMU.
Madam Vice Mayor, I'm moved to uphold the recommendation of the planning commission to refer the bill for a second reading and adoption.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Item C five. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
Madam Vice Mayor, we did receive written correspondence on this item, um, one letter of opposition, we have no additional public comment.
Thank you very much. City Attorney, do we need to read on this?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Ordinance introduction, bill number seven-two-one-three, case number LDC twenty-two-dash-zero-zero-zero-six-nine, Allen Glen Drive zoning map amendment. Ordinance to amend the zoning map from large lot residential, one unit per acre to multifamily residential, fourteen units per acre. The plus or minus two acre project site consists of two parcels located northeast of the terminus of Allen Glen Drive. Site has a master plan, land use designation of mixed neighborhood, MX.
Madam Vice Mayor, I apologize, we have one voicemail.
Thank you very much.
We'll play it now.
Yes, this is Jeff Bush. I received a notice about, uh, the rez, uh, the rezoning of, um, Allen Glen Drive, LDC two-two-dash-zero-zero-zero-six-nine. Um, I have the concerns about the zoning. I don't think it's, uh, should be zoned at that density. It's unsafe for cars to pull up and turn around, because you can't do it on an easy turnaround, there's no cul-de-sac that they took out from before for school buses, emergency vehicles. Um, I would suggest having a cul-de-sac or something like that. Again, too much overflow parking from the, what you zoned at the last time, rezoned it, uh, they, um, we have a lot of illegal parking going on and, um, i- it's overflowing into the rest of the neighborhoods and, uh, there's, uh, there's no exit for the, there's only one way in, one way out and all that extra traffic is creating quite a traffic problem through here and I think it's unsafe. I would suggest keeping the neighborhood at a SF eight zoning, um, that was already established at. Uh, that would work i- i- it's the best because, um, that's just way too many people on a dead-end street. I appreciate your thoughts on this and would you pursue? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, and is there any further public comment?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, there's no additional public comment.
Thank you very much. At this time, do any city council members have any disclosures? All right, hearing none, we're gonna move on to a staff presentation.
And just for the record, Madam Vice Mayor, there was proper notice given and no correspondence was received outside of that voicemail.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Madam Vice Mayor and council members. Grace Whited, Associate Planner, for the record, here to discuss the Allen Glen zoning map amendment. Wait, there it is. So the subject site is located northwest of Reno, uh, in, in northwest Reno, excuse me, north of Seventh Street, east of North McCarran Boulevard, near the Walmart and Save Mart you can see up there on your screen. So the applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment from large lot residential, one acre minimum, to multifamily, fourteen units per acre, which is consistent with our master plan. The specific plan district to the west of the site is multifamily and the remaining surrounding zoning is all residential in nature. So if this zone change is approved, the site would serve as a transition from the lower density residential to the east, to the higher density multifamily to the west and north of the site. So it's important to point out that the current zoning does not conform to our master plan designation. The master plan for this site is mixed neighborhood, which supports single-family and small multifamily projects. This change from LLR one to MF fourteen would bring the site into conformance with the This change from LLR1 to MF14 would bring the site into conformance with the mixed neighborhood master plan. So I wanted to point out that this project is in close proximity to local transit. Um, you can see up on your screen, uh, approximate location of the subject site. That dark blue line is a bus route, and all of the black dots on that line are bus stops. Here is a comparison of the development standards allowed in large lot one acre minimum and multifamily 14 units per acre. So density is the biggest change between the two zoning districts. LLR1 allows for one unit per acre, and MF14 allows for 14 units per acre. So any future land divisions or four or more lots, multifamily development greater than 20 units, or a disturbance of the major drainage way would trigger additional discretionary review. Here are the findings of a zoning map amendment. It does not conflict with state law, and it conforms to the master plan. So just to reiterate, it currently does not conform to our master plan, and this would bring it into conformance. Here is the recommended motion, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. Do any council members have any questions or comments? Councilwoman Breckus?
Yeah, was this associated with a, an annexation?
No.
It's been annexed?
Yes, it's within the McCarran Loop.
Yeah. Was there an annexation on this agenda?
Not that I am aware of.
Okay.
Okay. Any other council members have any questions or comments? All right, prepare to receive a motion. I know it's, it's my word, but since I was running the. Or what, Devin? Devin, do you mind giving me a motion on this one? Do you mind giving me a motion?
Move to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, item C... Ooh, that's it.
Moving on to item D1. A presentation.
Closing the public hearing, at this time, we're moving on to item D1. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
Sorry, there's lots moving around on my screen. Um, nope, we have no correspondence on this item and no registered public comment.
All right, staff, let's go.
I wanna make sure I'm hydrated for you. All right. Good afternoon, Madam Vice Mayor and council members. I'm Justin George, Associate Civil Engineer from Capitol Projects. This is a big day. A lot of work has already gone into this project, and it's the one the community has been waiting for a long time for. With that, I'm happy to announce that we're ready to break ground on the, excuse me, on the Moana Springs Community Aquatics and Fitness Center project. Item D1 before you today is to award guaranteed maximum price number one to Core Construction for the Moana Springs Community Aquatics and Fitness Center project. To remind you, we are using the construction manager at risk, or C-MAR project delivery method, according to NRS. So this is the first C-MAR project the city of Reno has, um, completed or undergone. And by the way, in the audience with me today, we have a representative from Core Construction, Travis Coombs. So at the January 26 council meeting, um, council awarded C-MAR pre-construction services to Core. Core has followed NRS in the advertising and selection of subcontractors to provide the city with guaranteed maximum price number one. So the guaranteed maximum price, or GMP, is the construction contract amount. Staff has worked with Core and our design team to solve many challenges to develop a project delivery plan that is on schedule for opening summer 2024. What we've developed is the two-phased approach to overcome material and labor demands and to schedule construction activities around winter weather shutdowns. Today, I have a short seven-slide presentation that includes details about Phase One, pending award of today's construction contract. Details about Phase Two, the overall project schedule, a recap on the project budget, and where public can find more information out about this project. So Phase One design was completed earlier this year, and what that includes are the site improvements and design of building structural members. Core One bid Phase One work to subcontractors and have prepared GMP number one. Before we dive into the details on Phase One, I'd like to go over this aerial image on the slide here. Just for reference, up to the north, top side of the slide is Moana Lane. Over to the east, on the right, is Baker Lane. To the south, or the bottom, is the VFW and the Jack Tig Ballfields. And over to the east, or the left, is where the GBYSL soccer fields are. This facility will have a large parking lot to be able to accommodate up to 214 vehicles. The George Hamilton Memorial Park, that's currently on the corner of Baker and Moana, is gonna be relocated into a grouping of existing mature trees that we're preserving on-site. There will be easy access to and from the site from both Baker and Moana. And to accommodate for major events, we've got a, a, a bus drop-off zone right here in the front to get our swimmers safely to the front of the facility. So we've had comments about this rendering. Kinda looks like there's no roof on this building. Rest assured, there is a roof. Just to show that, we've outlined and read where the roof's gonna be at. So this is an indoor facility. So what's included in Core's scope for Phase One will be the following items. Earthwork engrading, paving and site concrete, fencing and gates, landscape and irrigation, and working with our utility partners on the relocation of gas, water, sewer, and storm drain lines, and to bring overhead electric and phone lines underground. Another big component of Phase One is early procurement of select materials. There are some items like long-span steel joists and decking that currently have a 12-to-14-month lead time. We wanna be able to get that in the queue so we can get our materials delivered on time. So much of the work in Phase One is in preparation for Phase Two, which we'll plunge into on the next slide. But before that, I'd like to touch on a couple of, uh, or highlight some of the Phase One milestones. Pending award today, Core's ready to mobilize to the site August of this year. We're currently working on a plan for an August 10 groundbreaking ceremony, so keep a lookout for the details on that. And Phase One site improvements will continue through the duration of the project. So mobilizing to a, uh, construction site this big takes a lot of coordination and effort. We've been working with Core on developing a logistics and mobilization plan that minimizes impacts to the neighborhood. We've also been working with GBYSL on a soccer logistics plan to work around some of the major activities that they have going on this fall. So during design and construction, we're looking for sustainability options. Some of those include the reuse of demolition materials, or the recycling of demolition materials, the use of construction, recycled construction materials, identifying ways to reduce heavy vehicle traffic during construction, maintaining as many mature trees on-site as possible, the inclusion of, for infrastructure to have up to nine electric vehicle charging stations. And we're working towards a carbon-neutral footprint by the inclusion, or working on a plan to include a rooftop solar array to offset some of the electric energy use in the facility. And we're working with Avalon to get geothermal water to offset some of the, the gas usage of this facility. So that was a lot of info to go over. Let me make sure I, I hit all my points. All right. So moving on, I'm gonna jump lanes and go over to Phase Two. Phase Two is currently ongoing and will be complete this fall. Phase Two includes the architectural design for the buildings and pools. So we like to call that the vertical construction element of the project, opposed to the horizontal element of the project from Phase One. So let's take a quick dunk into some of the Phase Two details. So what we have here is a two-story steel structure. The facade is composed of concrete, a wood-finished metal siding, and a lot of glass to let in a lot of natural light. So this will be a cool, a cool design that's intended to evoke a warm community feeling that is environmentally conducive to the high-desert climate of northern Nevada. We are still working out the specifics for the final design, but generally, the project will have the following. For those looking to increase their heart rate, there will be an indoor 50-meter pool. I'd like to flip turn here and note that due to the heavy community input, they're gonna keep coming, so. So due to community input and the direction from council, our team was able to expand the original intended 35-meter competition pool to that full Olympic-length 50-meter pool. So this pool will be able to accommodate, um, both short course and long course configurations for fitness, for training, for competitions, along with other activities including water polo, diving, swim lessons, recreation, and more. And this facility will also be able to accommodate over 400 spectators. So for those looking for a little recreation, there will be an indoor multi-use pool. And what we have there is, uh, three feature areas and one large body of water. Uh, the first feature area is going to be our, our lap area. You're gonna be able to do a multitude of, you know, fitness, recreation activities, and it will have a water slide dumping into that section. The second area is a, a zero-depth or beach entry for safe, easy access into the pool. And the third feature area is a, um, a resistance pool, so people could go in there and do fitness. They could do rehab, or it could be used for fun as a lazy river area. And throughout this area, we're gonna have several splash features just for the, the little ones to have fun and play. So for those looking to just relax and soak, there will be an outdoor heated pool for just that. The second floor will include a 5,000-square-foot, um, fitness facility. And there's also gonna be a little area up there for spectator viewing to look out over the 50-meter pool. So, this facility, it's gonna have a lot to feature for the community, but it is also gonna be a tourism draw as a premier, um, facility for regional competitions. So Core will be bidding that work later this fall, and we anticipate bringing GMP number two back to council this winter. So here's an overall project schedule slide. Um, we've been swimming through the depths of planning, funding, and we're about to touch the wall at design. We're looking to finalize design this fall. Phase One of construction is gonna break ground August of this year, and like I said, continue through to completion. Phase Two construction should start early next fall after we thaw out from this, or early next spring after we thaw out from winter. Again, breaking that project into two phases allows us to get that splash opening summer 2024. So we presented this project budget slide before, but we've updated with current expenditures. To refresh, included are all the, the design, construction, and soft costs for this project. That left-hand, um, column has all the categories, the budget categories. In the center column is the swimmers' progress. That shows the amounts expended so far. And to the right column is the budgeted total for each category. Total project budget down in the bottom-right corner, corners, 4.7 million. This includes 9.7 million cash funds, 27 million bond funds, and the $9 million pledge from the Pennington Foundation.
Wait, wait, you said 4.7, you mean 45?
45.7 million, correct.
You were trying to say that. It's all good. Thank you.
So that includes, um, checking my math here, 9.7 million cash funds, 27 million bond funds, and the $9 million pledge from the Pennington Foundation. Staff will be bringing the Pennington pledge to the August 10 council meeting for acceptance. In the bottom row, with award of GMP one, we're excited to get the swimmer off their blocks and racing down their lane. Lastly, I'd like to share that Core and the city have been working hard on preparing a website. It's a super cool website, moannasprings.com. The site was launched July 5th and has already received over 700 hits. The website will include facility information, including the renderings from today's presentation, project updates and schedule, project manager contact information. And once construction begins, there will be some photos and videos of the construction activities. So we encourage everybody to visit the moannasprings.com website to get information on the project. That concludes my presentation. Thank you very much for your time.
Justin, you did swimmingly. Okay, that's all I got. Um, all right, we're gonna move into the council member questions and comments. Since we don't have the button to speak, um, I see Councilmember Reese has been really good about putting an item up on the dais, so we'll just go, we'll start with Councilmember Reese, and then if you wanna speak, just put, thank you. Oh, perfect, I'm sorry. Um, Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. And, and Justin, thank you very much for the presentation. It is an emotional day, certainly. And I suppose for my part, I wanna do two things. One is I wanna thank, uh, the William N. Pennington Foundation. Um, I, I often reflect on the impact that Mr. Pennington has had on this community. And for those who don't know, the Pennington Foundation was established in 1989 as an opportunity for Mr. Pennington, who had been a casino executive for many years. He, he and his partners really, um, took Circus Circus to the Public Stock Exchange. They were responsible for the Excalibur, the Luxor, the Mandalay Bay. And because of his deep roots in the state of Nevada, and because he was able to amass a significant fortune, he was able to give back to this community. And I remember at the time, there was a quote that he spoke about, about why he was so interested in the projects he was interested in. And it really framed the issue because of the Great Depression, right? And he grew up fairly, um, underprivileged, and so he wanted to make sure that people had access. So in this community, we have buildings at the university, we have buildings at the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, they stretch through into rural Nevada, uh, and they're really focused there. So without the Pennington Foundation's $9 million grant, this day would not have happened. Uh, I don't think any of us can deny the impact that the Pennington Foundation has had on, certainly, the, uh, the children in this community, the health-related issues, the education-related issues. So, uh, thank you to the Pennington Foundation and for, um, William Pennington for having had the, the grace and foresight to bless this community. Uh, he passed away in 2011, but I'm sure he's smiling, uh, thinking about all the fun that's gonna be had in this pool. So I wanna start there. The second thing is I wanna thank Core. Um, Core is a group that has also been part of the fabric of this community for a long time. But when we were selecting them for this particular project, I was interested to know what had they done in the past that might be similar, right? So if you go to their website, you can look at a phenomenal number of projects that they've built, uh, not only here, but across the United States. But, uh, particularly, I was interested in the Aquatic Center that they helped to remodel and expand upon at the University of Arizona. They were responsible for the Landier County Recreation Center, which I think has a similar vibe, uh, to this particular building. The Winnebago Boys and Girls Club, which I actually think was also a Pennington, um, related facility. Uh, so Core is someone who I have every, um, belief and, and, uh, knowledge that they will do an incredible job, that they will deliver the project that meets this community's needs for the next 100 years. And so excited for both the opportunity that the Pennington Foundation has presented, and also to Core for their commitment to this community and for their, um, willingness to be the, uh, you know, C-MAR in this particular example. And I look forward to, uh, working with them throughout the project. I know that your team also has done a heavy lift, so thank you to you, also to Ms. Kosky, for Ms. Schroeder, all of the people who have been rooting for this for so very long. As many of you know, I learned to swim in the old Moana Pool. I'm looking forward to taking a dip. So thank you very much. A great celebration, a great day today.
Yes, absolutely. Councilwoman Dour, followed by Councilwoman Delgado.
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, feel so lucky and blessed to have this particular facility located in Ward 2, uh, still located in Ward 2. I've been very involved with it the entire, almost eight years I've been on council, um, as a champion and a supporter, uh, of what has been happening here. And I too wanted to, to do a personal shout-out to the William N. Pennington Foundation for what they've done. Um, it takes vision and understanding, but also kind of some, I guess, some grit, uh, to, to commit to projects like this, which are gleam in our eye, and yet, um, and have the confidence in us to deliver. Um, and that would not have been possible without the Sierra Nevada Aquatics, uh, Community Aquatics nonprofit, who, over 10 years ago, began this effort to obtain a grant from Pennington. Pennington held them, um, to account, uh, have a lot of requirements to make sure they're real and make sure that they could actually make the match, which is a, um, one-for-one match, which was a big lift. And, and to that, I've gotta give it to our staff with Doug at the helm in terms of digging deep and looking for pockets of cash to be able to make that match. Because without that cash match, the Pennington would not come forward. What they did for us was to extend the timeframe. I mean, this came out right before COVID in 2019, and then through COVID, we had to figure all of this out. How can we make this match? And they gave us timeframes, and they were willing to work with us to extend those timeframes so that we really could come to the table with the funding. So I can't say enough about SNC, the, the Sierra Nevada Community Aquatics and their commitment through the ages. I mean, they've had people come and go on their board, but some people, like, um, Chip Hobbs, have remained, you know, s- front and center there. Um, I also wanted to, uh, mention a, a word too about Core, and that is that, to my knowledge, this is our first construction manager-at-risk project, our very first. And so this is a, an important step for our city, to be able to take a project where we're going to work with one, um, organization from des- from, um, design, you know, through construction to delivery of the project. And I'm gonna have a question on round two about how that works, because I think it's important for people to understand this kind of new age of engineering and development of projects that we're entering into. Um, I also wanted to just mention that we've been I also wanted to just mention that we've been, there's been a lot of media interest in this project. And before, and now, and, and I know coming forward. And you have highlighted very well some of the key features. And it's impossible to cover all of the amazing aspects, but I do want to highlight one thing before my time ends right now. And that is that Jamie informs me that in the lobby will be a historical display of what has happened on the Moana Springs property going all the way back to 1910 and even probably back further, and, and how this property has been used, evolved, and played a very key role in our community, even to the point of having a trolley go all the way down to Moana from downtown Reno. And it's been the site of many, many activities. So we'll come back to that, but I want to also highlight the art that is going to be part, you know, it's a small part, 2%, but to the art community, very important. So thank you again, and we'll, we'll come back around. Thank you.
Very good. Councilman Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I won't, I think I'll just piggyback on everything that my colleagues have stated already, and I appreciate, again, ultimately, the, the team's effort here in the city of Reno. I know you guys are just to get together constantly as things have evolved over the several eight years, if not more, since I remember being on council for, for the advocates in the community that have wanted a pool here for so long, for so long. And, and thank you to, I think I'm very confident, and I know CORE's abilities in terms of what they've been able to do, so I'm very confident us working, moving forward with the C-MAR with CORE makes total sense. They've been proven to be able to do such work, and I'm excited to, to have them as part of the team. Additionally, to, to Councilman Reese's point, the Pennington Foundation, thank you, if you're, if you're watching and you're hearing. But they are, to me, in many different eyes, are the epitome of, of a public-private partnership. They're the ones that really kick off opportunities for local governments to do what we can do for our community. And so thank you to, to all those at the Pennington Foundation. And, and also just want to state is, this is to add the, the, what you guys have already shown, the outdoor pool, the warming pool, all these things to use the environment, to use. I mean, this is state-of-the-art. This is something long overdue. And it's just going to be a beautiful opportunity for us to learn and grow from. It's long overdue, of course, but thank you, and Doug, to your team. And thank you to the mayor and the council that taken and really put ourselves out there and say, let's support this. It's going to be tough, but it's something that we need. So thank you to my colleagues for stepping up and actually saying, let's, let's make this happen. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other, Councilwoman Brekis, and then I'll come back to?
Well, I think Ms. Weber.
Oh, I apologize.
Go ahead.
Oh, you do have your thing. We'll go to, my apologies.
I don't have a fanny soap.
Okay, Councilwoman Brekis, followed by Councilwoman Weber.
I just, on your slide with the, with the swimmer, it's a saline pool, right? All features will be saline? Is that correct?
No, they're going to be domestic water using standard chlorine disinfection.
All throughout?
All three pools, domestic water, correct.
Well, I thought, I thought all pools use domestic water, but then you put saline into it rather than a chlorinated approach.
So in our discussions with the Health Department, a saline is, is only a, it's, it's still a two-step process. They do require that chlorine is added to a saline solution for disinfection in the pools. So it adds another layer of maintenance and requirements for our staff to be able to maintain a saline pool opposed to a standard domestic water pool using just chlorine. So either way, they have chlorine for disinfection in the pools.
Well, I would like to know more about that, and if we're too far, because I thought early discussions where we were going saline, just like how Alf Sorenson is. And that's our newest standard pool regionally, actually Carson City is. And they're saline also, right?
I'm not, or the, the makeup of those pools.
Okay, well, could we, could we?
Yes, that's something we can look into and get back to you on.
I, I do not know, but I have been, you know, have some recollection, because we've been on this for so long, that the best standard is a saline pool. And I don't want to be building, you know, a pool that's not, you know, at the, at the best, you know, contemporary standards.
Yeah, the standards evolve equally with the saline and the, the standard chlorine treatment using the filters. So we are pursuing latest standards regardless whether saline is, is included in that, that mixture or not.
Okay, because chlorine, I, I thought I understood has some, some impacts to people with certain skin conditions. And that's why the move to saline, and I just want to make sure we've got everyone counted in.
So according to our, our partners with the county Health Department, there is no getting away from chlorine in the disinfection of, of municipal pools.
But is there a way to, you can download the chlorine because you've uploaded the saline amounts?
That's something that we'd have to work out through the, the chemistry with our designers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Weber, and then we'll go to round two with Councilwoman Duer.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I am so excited about today. Living in the community for 39 years, out in the North Valleys, the whole 39 years. I don't know that we, that we came in the North Valleys out to want a pool, you know, early on. And so we had other, another pool in the community that was closer. But I just have to say, I am so excited about this, and I think for all of us in the city of Reno, this is a, a grand item for all of us. And I really am excited for our community in the North Valleys, which sometimes doesn't feel like we're in the city of Reno, and a lot of people are sharing that. But it, it is so awesome, because I think there's going to be ways that we're going to get folks and kids and others out to the, out to the pool. There's going to be many ways that I think we can, we can get them out there. And it's, I'm just so excited, and I want to say thank you to, you know, I haven't been here that long, but I know that Councilmember Duer has been working really hard for lots of years with this, and all of you. Just appreciate, and to our staff, and to CORE, just, this is like a big day and really exciting. And I just want to say thank you to everyone. Just really excited.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we'll turn to round two, Councilwoman Duer.
Yeah, thank you so much. I just wanted to highlight a few features that I know you did not have time to cover everything, but just some things that are maybe small, but big in their impact. And that includes the fact that we do plan to put solar on the roof, and that should offset tremendously the operating costs. Number two, I know we're still working through the geothermal details, but you have made it so that we can put in a geothermal heat exchange once those details get worked through. And both of those things will really reduce our operating costs. And my understanding is by almost, I'll just say at least 80%, you know, from what it costs to what it will net out in terms of using these cutting-edge facilities, the, the small fees that would be associated with use of the pool. Here are some of the questions I've been asked by the community. Can everybody come and play? Yes. It's a community, public pool. It is not a membership kind of situation. The fees would be very low, very accessible. There are even scholarships. If you could not, you know, pay the small amount, and we're talking for seniors, $3 a day kind of idea. The, so it's very sustainable. One of the things I've been asked as well is, you know, when we think of Moana Springs, it's, it's a whole complex. You mentioned the jacktie ball fields, the soccer fields. On the far west side, we have the fire station, number three. And behind there, we have a parking lot. And that is to be the first in northern Nevada community solar site, where we're partnering with MV Energy. We're repaving the parking lot. We are, they are putting on solar panels. That solar energy will be available then to all the residents around there that apply and qualify, so they too can participate in sustainability. We talked earlier about the inequities with heat islands. Well, this is a heat island, and, and we are seeking to remedy that. One of the things too, that we haven't had a chance much to talk about, and that the media have certainly been picking up on, is the enhanced economic opportunities here with tourism. We always have to go somewhere else. And even our swim teams are divided amongst three and four pools right now. My understanding, they'll be able to center in some ways in this pool for their training. One of the cool things that Jamie told me was that they plan to keep open lanes, even when teams are practicing, which, you know, sometimes, you know, think about the bowling alley. We think about it, sitting empty only for competition, and how do we integrate that resource with the community? Well, I think we are, we are already addressing that issue by anticipating the demands, but anticipating the desire of the community to still be able to utilize the pool when there is competition going on. I also just wanted to mention the fitness center, the meeting rooms that will be there, whether it's a nav meeting or other kind of community meetings, parties, those kind of things that can be held there. I know I'm running out of time, but I just wanted to mention too that one of the final features that Jamie mentioned, and this is the kind of thought I think that's going into this. You have busy roads, you have lots of action, you have kids playing soccer next door, lots of noise. But in the soaking pool, she tells me, they're looking at a water feature where water might slide down the wall, similar to our granite wall out here, and would tend to muffle and drown out that, that sound. That might become part of the art that goes into this project. And also the setting, making sure we take advantage of our Sierra Nevada views. I, I just think the small details that are going into the design are worth mentioning, and, you know, our kudos to the entire team. So thank you.
Fantastic. Any other members have any questions or comments at this time? All right, I'm going to send it back to Councilwoman Duer.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, thank you so much. Well, it would be with great pleasure that I motion to accept the staff recommendation for item D1.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. Wait, hang, hang on, hang on one second before we applaud. Justin, you are being honored in the best way we know how here at the city. I believe there is some, some swag and some chains and maybe a hat. All right, nothing says job well done by an embarrassing hat and a heavy chain necklace. But in all seriousness, kudos to you. This is, this, it feels like you've come such a long way to get to this point, which you have, and you all are going to celebrate this day, and we know that it's going to, you know, there'll be some bumps along the way as you move forward. But with all of your leadership, it's bound to be a success, and you'll be jumping in before we know it. So congratulations, Justin and team.
I'd like to pass off some of that credit to our, our Parks and Capital Projects team. We've got a Moana Tuesdays, several of the staff. Tuesday is dedicated to Moana Pool, so.
Very good.
Thanks to the team.
And on that note, I mean, one of the small factoids I learned along the way is that this is our first pool investment in almost three decades. I mean, that's just gives you chills when you think about it, the magnitude of the project and the fact how long it's been.
Pretty exciting, yeah. Very, very exciting. Kudos to everybody's staff. This is, you should be very, very proud of yourselves, and can't wait until it's finished.
And it sounds like a groundbreaking is in the offing, potentially.
Yes, we're very excited.
Yep, keep an eye out, August 10.
We should throw water instead of dirt. Let's not throw dirt. All right, Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on, closing public comment on this item? I believe we've covered everything. All right, fantastic. At this time, we're going to move on to, I believe we're on item D2.
That is correct. We're moving on to item D2, which I believe is a discussion about Zero Riverside Drive. And since we're doing some transitions, if you'd like, we can move into public comment.
Yes, can we hold for one second? Okay, yes. At this time, may we move into public comment? Thank you very much, Madam.
Okay, we do have one public commenter in the audience, Rhonda Thiessen.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Rhonda Tyson. I'm the president of 1,200 Riverside Drive Community Association. We're the property that's not only next to Zero Riverside Drive. We also hold easements across that property, most significantly, an easement that spans the entire property for ingress and egress. It has made development of that parcel very difficult. The last time I spoke in front of the council was almost three years ago. I took the council's promise at that time, to me and my neighborhood, to be to find a project for that lot whose imprint would fit. In the last three years, I've heard nothing. Until a couple of months ago at our Neighborhood Advisory Board for Ward One, Nancy Gilbert spoke in favor of the expansion of the Nevada Museum of Art, which would necessitate the removal and possible destruction of the historic mansion called the Sinai Mansion or Howell House. She spoke of moving it to that lot, and for the first time in years, I could envision a project on that lot that would fit. I'm sorry that our mayor for the day is not here, because I see this project for him and the other youth in our community. They deserve to have an opportunity to have a connection to Reno's past. Preserving this mansion will allow that. They deserve to have continued public access to the Trekkie River and all the amenities surrounding it. So I'm going to ask the council to direct staff to work with the Gilberts on their project, and suggest that while you do that, try to get Sinai Mansion Historic Designation, because if you do that, you don't have to pay $105,000 to Washoe County for the liens that they hold on it, because one of the purposes of the Open Space Law under which the city holds this property is for historic preservation. I'm going to ask you to approve this project for what it will be, which is a connection to Reno's past, historical preservation, and an opportunity to get some money into the city coffers. But I'm also going to ask the council to bring your best imagination. This is a parcel that can be the linchpin. Riverside Drive, the Trekkie River, Idlewild Park, parking, bike paths, and walking paths are all there. This is a location that can not only draw in people from the city of Reno, it can be a destination from outside this community if you have the vision.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any further public comments?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. We don't have any live public comment. However, for the record, I would just like to note that we did receive 22 comments associated with this. Oh, I apologize. We do have one in Zoom, so I'll finish mine, and then we will move our commenter over. But we received 22 comments prior to 4:00 PM yesterday, July 19. These comments were logged as concerned items, because we don't have a project in front of us today. So they were, you know, various general in comment, general in nature. We do additionally have some voicemails, which we'll play, but we'll first move over our public commenter from the Zoom meeting, Ms. Amy Opio. Amy, if you would unmute, state your name for the record, and go ahead and begin giving your public comment.
Good afternoon. My name is Amy Opio. I'm the Chief Executive Officer, Deputy Director for the Nevada Museum of Art, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the Nevada Museum of Art, also together with my executive director and Chief Executive Officer David Walker, who cannot be with us today. I'm speaking on behalf of support for the project that Nancy Gilbert is bringing forward. The museum has been working with Nancy Gilbert for over three years to preserve the Sinai Mansion. This is his, an important home in our, in our history of Reno to preserve. The museum is planning an expansion onto that property. The mansion is not on the historic register, and so we are hopeful that it can be preserved through Nancy's efforts. The presentation that Nancy has in front of you today, we feel is a very unique opportunity for the city. It does kind of lean into how other cities throughout the nation have utilized their riverfront properties for not only tourists, but I would call unique, or unique amenity development, including the city of San Antonio, Texas, which does a wonderful amenity development, including um, the city of San Antonio, Texas, which does a wonderful job in really kind of trying to support small business, cultural activity, and um, arts and culture along the river corridor. I'd like to also say that um, the museum is very supportive of small business. We ourselves are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, so we would like to see um, not only Nancy's efforts supported, but through the development of the property in and of itself. She's talking about restaurants, small business, gathering space for families along the river that does tie in nicely to what um, my predecessor on today's um, comments had remarked, that it ties that whole corridor together. Um, it's a unique destination, and um, we just wanted to show up today in support of the proposal that she's putting in front of you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. We will transition into voicemails at this time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Helena Russell. I live in Reno, Nevada. Um, and I am calling in to make a comment on the item that's going to be on Wednesday, 7/20, um, council agenda, item D, point two. This is regarding the building of the Sinai Mansion. That's the proposal at Zero Riverside Drive. I want to um, put in my public comments. I am in favor of moving the Sinai Mansion to that site for um, development of a public space that can be enjoyed by all and not allocated towards condominiums that could not be enjoyed by all. Again, my name is Helena Russell. I live in Reno, Nevada. My number is 775-232-5218, if you'd like to reach me for further comments. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Hello, my name is Sue Higley, H-I-G-L-E-Y, and I'm in the district, in fact, I'm in the building that's behind, directly behind where item D2 on your agenda is set to be heard at the next meeting. I want to strongly, strongly say that I, we do not need another high-rise on the river. Already, our sewage system that connects with Reno High School and I don't know who else is inadequate. And there are frequent problems where we have to have someone come out and we have to pay extra. It's, it's a big mess. And in addition, I personally don't want a big skyscraper or however tall it's gonna be behind the building because it'll completely block off the sun on that whole side of the building permanently. Additionally, the other, other pro, the other um, proposal on the, on the um, agenda, pardon me, is that a historic house to be moved there, that mansion from near the Nevada Museum of Art. And the mansion then will be safe from destruction and a small neighborhood cafe, which would be a lot less parking and a lot less, a lot less issues than the, than the aforementioned secure, this, oh my gosh, I can't speak this morning, sewer problems, um, is a much better use of that property as a neighborhood cafe and perhaps, you know, um, only a few parking places. And there, there's also a plan in that to include a garden. Um, the entrance to, to back of this property is uh, next to an easement, and the easement has be, has become much better. But um, we don't need, there'd be impossible parking if you put that uh, high-rise back there too, because it's bad enough for us to get in that side of the property um, now. But if you put a big building with a lot more parking and visiting and all that stuff, we'll have a, we'll have an issue on our private property of people trying to cut through and it will become a big mess. So please, please don't approve a high-rise. If you want another high-rise in Reno, put it downtown with the others. At least that's set up already for the sewer and the parking and all that. Thank you for your time. My phone number is 775-747-5820. Thank you. And again, the last name is Higley, H-I-G-L-E-Y, first name Susan.
Hello, this is Julie. The last name is Ott, and I am calling in regard to City Council Agenda Item D dash two, uh, for July 20th, 2022 City Council Meeting. And this is in regard to the Riverside Drive property. Um, I am adamantly opposed to housing, uh, higher density housing on that site. It's next to the river and it's also got flood zone AE. I understand a group is looking to buy it or lease it to relocate the Sinai Mansion, which would be a very wonderful use of that parcel. Um, there's just too much density along the river there, as one can see up the road. You've got some multifamily that was built. We need to preserve the open spaces that we have, which are limited. Um, we are also getting um, a little overbuilt on multifamily, even though we have a low vacancy. But please uh, consider the Gilberts' relocation of the Sinai Mansion, which would be a wonderful use of that parcel that could be enjoyed by all. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Hello, Reno City Council Meeting. This is Dennis Black. My wife and I, Jody Black, um, bought a condo at 1200 Riverside, Unit 1251. So I'm calling in response to the meeting tomorrow about the adjacent vacant lot behind our building. And um, I would just like to say that I can't be there. I'm calling from vacation. Um, but I really would like to call and support the Nancy Gilbert choice of options for that lot. Moving the Howell House there, having some cafe, coffee, cafe, any kind of nice thing like that that would benefit the whole community, I think. Um, and I don't want additional apartments or housing there. It's constituted enough in that neighborhood for parking and things. My wife and I are 60 years old. We bought there recently in the last year, hoping that there would be something like this. We plan to live there throughout our retirement. Will be in Reno a long time. I'm a Nevada resident for the last 45 years. Um, I pay a lot of taxes and I want to stay in that neighborhood and have a neighborhood feel. So I hope you support that. I hope you take my concern into account. And um, I really appreciate the time. So um, thank you very much. Dennis Black, Unit 1251, and my cell is 775-997-9688. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
I'm calling concerning the property at Zero Riverside Drive Lot, 01 and 02, about a possible high-rise going on the property or a smaller unit such as the Howell House and having a cafe or something put on that property. A high-rise on that property would completely block the sun from the backside of our building. If anything should be built there, it should be a restriction of the original restriction of three stories at most. Anything else will have a significant effect against the association of 1200 Riverside Drive and the value of our properties and our view of downtown. I support the Howell House or some other three-story living facility put in there. A high-rise would be out of the question. If somebody would like to call me about this, my phone number is 858-254-2474. My name is Christopher Schaefer. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Angie Wiskacel. I'm in Unit 1222 at 1200 Riverside. I understand that there will be a public meeting, an agenda for July 20th by the City Council Meeting. And one of the things that the city is going to review and hopefully approve is the proposal from Nancy Gilbert. She wishes to move the Howell House from its current location, um, near the Nevada Museum of Art, who's a Lot Zero, which is right next door to the 1200 Riverside Building. And I believe that that is the right course of action. Um, there's several reasons to support Nancy's proposal. The lot needs to be developed because it is an ice shore today and has been for a long time. And we hope that any development would add to the neighborhood ambiance. Um, and uh, also having the historic house placed on the lot would, of course, saw any other development plans that could adversely impact 1200 Riverside. And that, I, I believe, um, could have some negative implications uh, for the, uh, for the area. Uh, so again, I want to submit this as public comment. And I again believe that having the historic house, um, would be the right, the right move. Uh, most certainly, um, it would provide, um, uh, a job, if you will, for help in the area. And I believe that overall, it's a very, very, uh, sound, uh, sound decision. Um, and again, would definitely add to the neighborhood ambiance. Um, so, uh, any questions? 925-216-3363. And um, this again is Angie Wiskacel, W-I-S-K-O-C-I-L. And um, I believe that again, that neighborhood residents can easily stop and pour a cup of coffee as she's providing a cafe-type environment. And uh, I think there are many, many, um, places in and around 1200 Riverside that in fact, today provides serve and drinks. And uh, Homage on Waltzman is one example of that. So again, would really fit in the our community. Thank you very much. And any questions? Again, I left my phone number. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Is there any further public comment? One more? All right, thank you.
Thank you. I'm Carolyn McCranus, and I live at Riverside condo. Uh, I disapprove of having a 12-story condo next to my condo because it'll stop the view and the lighting. But I'm approved, and I, I'm glad that you're thinking about maybe a coffee shop or maybe a possible bar, but a condo, no. And I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Is there any further public comment?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. At this time, we have no additional public comment.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carl Hall?
Good afternoon, Madam Vice Mayor, City Council Members. Carl Hall, City Attorney for the Record. Staff is looking for direction on how to dispose of this property located at Zero Riverside Drive. Essentially, three options. I, I think you're probably aware that the Gilberts wanted to move the Sinai Mansion over there. We have Sparks Construction that would like to build some apartments. 20% would be allocated to affordable housing, or we could just send it to auction. So staff is looking for direction.
Thank you very much. Um, maybe a question that uh, I have of process-wise of our City Attorney's Office. Are we styled if we wanted to give a couple of minutes to those that are in the room that wanted to tell us a little bit about what their ideas?
Yeah, that's part of the packet. I think, you know, they, I, I don't know who's here, but I'm assuming the Gilberts may be here, maybe a representative from Sparks, and certainly if you wanted to hear their ideas, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, so I just, I just wanted to know that we had it within our discretion to give some slight parameters to allow um, the two or three that might be in the room to come forward and give a brief presentation. We're styled to do that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, I return to my colleagues and ask if they would like to uh, allow those that are interested and have ideas for the property to come forward with maybe a, a three-minute, three to five-minute um, discussion, and then we'll come back to the council for questions? Does that sound good?
If I may, Madam Vice Mayor, um, I would be very interested in hearing, and I had the same question you did. My concern was, and, and I don't want to blow this up in any way, but I, I didn't know how the public would really know what we're considering here, the way this is agendized. And it was just that there were own attachments, but it doesn't really tell the public, A, we're gonna evaluate three options.
That was my concern in my questions to the City Attorney, because while I want to hear from those that have to this point expressed an interest, are we somehow by doing so and deliberating in any form or fashion, somehow keeping others who weren't aware um, of this item from coming forward? That, that was why I posed the question to the City Attorney's Office. I'm gonna turn to our City Manager.
Sure. Um, historically, the, this body has directed staff to sell this property at auction. Um, the number of uh, easements and liens on the property, some of them have been time-barred now, uh, but there were some practical matters that prevented us from doing that. In the intervening time since we last received that instruction, we received two unsolicited proposals for the space, one of which is, is from the group headed up by Ms. Gilbert, um, that is to lease the property, move the Sinai Mansion and operate a, a commercial facility uh, in that building. One of which is to build condominiums uh, on the property. And you'll recall the, the condominium map that's on the property right now is one of those issues that would have to be cleared up if the, if the body decided it wanted to pursue the, the proposal from the Gilberts. And so what we're asking for today is simply direction from the body in terms of, would you like to proceed with your original direction, which is to sell the properties at auction? Would you like us to get down to negotiating with one of the groups who submitted a, an unsolicited proposal so that we could bring back um, a more detailed look at a, at a potential project and the council could then say up or down whether or not you'd like to pursue it? Um, it's really just a question of how would you like us to spend staff time?
Okay, well, if I may on that one. Councilwoman Doer?
My, I love that you brought this to us, and I'm really interested in hearing about the proposals. My biggest concern is just, how would anyone in the public know that we've gotten these, these proposals? How would they know that we're even accepting proposals? How, how would they know that maybe there's another older house that would like to move to the site or a different condo developer that would want to move to the site? This is, it's just a, it's just an issue of equity. Um, if you're asking us to move forward with, with three options, one, action, one Gilbert proposal, one, two Sparks proposal, I, I don't, I just don't see that, that's why I brought this up at my briefing. I just didn't see how anyone would know that we were considering that. So I, I like all the options. I'm interested in hearing about them. But I, I, I feel like we have knowledge because we got a briefing from you, we have attachments, but I don't know how the general public knows that. That's my biggest issue.
I think that's a, a concern for sure with the unsolicited proposal portal that we have that runs through, um, I, I think it lives with finance, but we're, we're working on expanding that so that things get into the right hands more quickly.
Well, and if you had said, like, option one, two, and three, right here on this agenda, I would be ready to move forward and make a decision.
And I, I think I'd be remiss, though, if I didn't say, and I, you know, Carl, stay seated, please. But um, there is probably a fourth option, although I don't know that you could take action on it today. We could receive direction that you would like to see a more formal RF process, and that would be advertised and people would have perhaps um, a better understanding of what we were looking to do and, and when we were accepting proposals.
Thank you very much. Um, uh, I am like Councilwoman Doer. I'm struggling a little bit in this, uh, in that same context. Um, but I suppose if it's the appetite of the body to just sell it at auction, which we have done with a number of properties, then that should be the motion, I would think, before us today. But how do we know that without having the full breadth of the other options before us as well? And to Councilwoman Doer's point, uh, have we done an adequate job of letting people know that we're open to those options? Um, so I'll turn it to, I'm just speaking out loud here, but Councilwoman Breckus?
Yeah, I mean, I think there is precedent for us receiving proposals at the table for different things in the past. You, you know, I mean, I've heard, I've heard those, um, even on property-related. So I don't, I don't, um, I think there is precedent for someone pitching, pitching an idea, pitching a business model or so on. But um, the fourth option that he mentioned, um, was one that I, when I heard the City Attorney was making the presentation, I presume it's because of legalities, not, you know, policy discussion because we'd have a staffer up for policy. But I thought there was a way to dispose of properties for economic development purposes and then have an RFI with, you know, known rating criteria and so on for, um, you know, what that would deliver. And I will let the council know that the last time we auctioned a property, and I voted against the way we, we did that, the bid, because I thought it needed to meet an economic development purpose. And it was for a property that started to conduct an unpermitted, illegal operation on the property on, on Keystone Avenue. on the property on Keystone Avenue. They got shut down by different regulatory bodies, but, and it's for sale, you know? So a great prime piece of property, urban, went by this body to, not a great operator, not a great use. I think another party's picking it up now. But I do think if this fourth option is one that's out there, we should be incredibly strategic that property that we dispose of meets goals, whatever those are. And it's good to have those on the front end, because then you could have some basis for rating them on the back end. That's kind of economic development, it's kind of place-making. So if the council's not prepared to move forward today, I would really encourage us to do that, because if anything else, the Keystone Avenue illegal truck terminal that we experienced for a year from someone who bought it under auction is not the way for the city to dispose of property, in my view. Doesn't meet goals. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Counselwoman Reese.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. For my part, and I'll direct my comments to the City Attorney, the open meeting law obviously requires the agenda for the meeting consists of a clear and complete statement of the topics to be considered during the meeting. And as I read it, the request here is for direction from council regarding the potential disposition or use of the parcels. And so it seems to me that that's broad enough to include whatever might come up in the discussion that we have today. And so I want to get confirmation that you feel confident that the, there is a clear and complete statement of the topics to be discovered. And then we'll move on from this part.
Yes, I think that's broad enough that you can have a broad discussion about what the opportunities are, if you want to do an economic development agreement. What do you want staff to do in terms of pursuing disposition of the property, you know, in addition to paying off the delinquent taxes so that that deed restriction is no longer there?
So I understand. I just don't want to have the hand wringing over it, and we'll move on to the discussion of the issue in the described.
Thank you very much. Counselwoman Breckus.
I thought there was some interesting public testimony that, you know, the lien could be waived by a certain public process, putting it to a certain public purpose. Is that true? Have you researched that? I hadn't heard that.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
As I understand it, the city took this property through our prerogatives from the tax rolls because it was delinquent on taxes. And if we hold on to the property and use it for certain public purposes, like historic preservation, we don't have to pay back that tax lien, is that correct? Have you researched that?
Well, the deed restriction is preserving it for open space. So I think if we were going to utilize the property, we should negotiate with the county to either allow us to use the property and develop the property and not pay the taxes, you know? So I think we'd have to go to the county and see what they would allow us to do.
Is historic preservation considered open space?
It's not historic preservation. It's deed restricted for open space pursuant to the lack of, or the delinquent taxes.
Okay, I guess we're in a definitional issue that would need some more exploration. Mr. Manager said that there's a condo map on the property? I thought that it expired and never been finalized and plotted.
My understanding is there was a 12-story final map recorded on the property that hasn't gone anywhere.
There's still a 12-story final map, so I'd have to go through a reversion to acres to use it beyond that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. So the discussion that Counselwoman Breckus just brought up about the taxes with the county, and that being something that would be a discussion point with them?
Yes.
Is that something that would need to happen at the time of a project, or could it happen before a project regardless of the project?
I think it would be something that would be discussed during the negotiation period as to what the project is going to be, and who's going to be responsible for paying those taxes. Obviously, if we paid them, then part of our negotiations would be reimbursed for that.
Okay. This feels a little bit like a cart-horse sort of situation that we're in here today. And I'm a little uneasy about some hanging chads. Counselwoman Doherty.
Yeah, what I would love to see before we make some decisions is, I mean, where's the map of the site? Where's the zoning on the site? I'm hearing it's open space, but I'm hearing it has a possible map for 12-story condo, but it might have expired. In other words, I would like to have a presentation from planning to understand the status of the property.
We can certainly arrange that. I do think, just for avoidance of further confusion, there is a deed restriction on the property because of the way we hold it from the county that requires the use to be open space.
Okay.
That is not the same as having an open space zoning designation, which it does not have.
No, it's a deed restriction.
It's just a deed restriction that we can't develop something that doesn't suit the purpose of open space in the eyes of the county. And that would be something that would need to be resolved.
Or they could re, if we didn't, they would take it back because we were in violation of the deed restriction. So I've had other properties in Ward Two that are from the county, that have a deed restriction for open space. And what I recall is when someone came forward even wanting to do a version of open space, but a different category, not just pure open space, but in this case amusement, that they had to go through a whole zoning reclassification, and the county came and said, no, we object, and we do not support rezoning, this is for open space. So now I'm really, so that's my past precedent, right in Ward Two, property five acres from county with a deed restriction. And so I would want to get these issues worked out. That's where I'm at.
Counselwoman Reese.
I think, Mr. Manager, perhaps your statement confused the body. It's deed restricted because we, there are taxes owed on it. When the taxes are paid, the deed restriction for open space ceases to exist. That's correct.
Is that true?
Yes, it's not a property that had a deed restriction for open space, and we're going to change it. It's the nature by which we acquired it and having delinquent taxes on it. Once the delinquent taxes are paid, it goes back to whatever its original zoning designation was, which presumably is residential and apparently a prior map.
And I suppose where I was coming from with my question to the City Attorney's Office was, the clarification of those due taxes with the county, to me, is a piece of the puzzle that we should probably clear up on the front end because it has implications on negotiations or whatever going forward. So that was, that was my question, is, is that something we could get if we were to continue this item, something we could get some clarification on because it has implications on the next step that we take? It certainly has an influence on, to me.
And Madam Vice Mayor, may I ask, and perhaps it's through you to our City Attorney's Office, in truth, what should happen is we would have to pay the $105, no matter how we disposed of it, then we have the greater flexibility to do with which this body decides to do with it. So you are correct, there's a chicken or an egg element of it. We could go out and wipe out that restriction today. And I think that's what's been stylized here, and I'll let the City Attorney's Office take care of that question. Certainly discussed in the background of the staff memo and report that paying the $105 might then allow us to have the discussions.
And is it $105, or is it $105,000? It's $105,000. Okay, just checking. But I think that would be a very good move, Counselwoman Reese.
I tend to think, that's kind of where my headspace is. I just, I just need more clarification on the tax issue and how that affects or doesn't affect us in the next step that we take forward. So I don't know if another council member would like to make a motion. I'm prepared to make a motion to continue, but I'll leave it to somebody else if they'd like.
Continue, okay. Well, I would make, it's not my ward, so I, but propose for consideration by a ward member, perhaps we could, I think in my motion, I would recommend that we pay the taxes. And then, not continue this item, but pay, give the direction to pay the taxes, bring it back to us with one of the options being an RFI, where we could hear from the proposers, any proposers that would like to propose, I assume these two would be in play, could be a third, and consider it at that time. Because I personally, I'll just add why, I personally am not very in favor to Counselwoman Breck's point of just putting this out for sale, you know, to the highest bidder. I think we should have some role in its future determination of use.
Well, I'll turn to Counselwoman Reese, but I actually may be in favor of that. I just would like to understand the implications of the tax, and are we, in fact, as a mutual government body, on the hook to pay those to the county?
Somebody is on the hook to pay those to the county, whether it's us or whether it's the ultimate user.
But we could recoup, right? I'm sorry to interrupt, but we could recoup from the.
It's all deal points.
Okay. Counselwoman Breckus, followed by Counselwoman Reese.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we have an unsolicited proposal, anyone can apply, it's a way to make sure that, you know, there's a transparent process of how people want to do business with the city. And I think the Finance Department did that a long time ago because people were pitching ideas, you know, to council members, to the managers, to department heads, and just wanted to have a portal. And I think that's a good practice. So maybe we haven't formalized how, what we do with those, you know, ultimately, and do those people get time on the agenda? You know, I don't know. I think they should, to some degree, you know, but I think a lot of things should get time on the agenda that haven't. But I do want to say, I think that if we do go out for RFI, we should have some broad parameters of how we will rate or score any proposals. And I'd like to have an opportunity that, that the council does that, because I'd like to interject something that hasn't been done so far in this discussion, is there is a building on there of tremendous historic significance, okay? It is a building that is, I understand, repairable. We've had to really preserve it and maintain it, and it is in attractive uses, but I think it's secured right now. And it is a spot, what I understand, is the liaison to the Historic Resources Commission, where many marriages took place in Reno. It was the place where marriages in Reno's history as a marriage center were, you know, someone wants to get married in the middle of the night. That's where the marriage official lived, and he conducted those. And to lose that piece of history would be kind of sad. So if we have a discussion that we're going to put it out to RFI, I'd like to have an opportunity to propose to the body that a rating schedule involve salvage of that building.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very good. Counselwoman Reese.
Madam Vice Mayor, I think that the concept of taking the taxes off the table is a very good and well-thought-out process. Obviously, there's a cost to us. What I will say, and I've had this conversation with Ms. Miles before, is that every city of Reno-owned parcel is always for sale, right? It's a question of, we have frequently gotten unsolicited bids for things. So I don't think it's unusual that this is the way in which it has come about. I think what our colleagues are expressing is concern about the nature and timing of it all, the potential end use, although I'm not sure the end use is certainly something that we're all prepared to evaluate today. I will say that my understanding from Ms. Gilbert in my conversations with her is there's a very tight timeframe and very short fuse as to the ability to preserve the particular house that is the Sinai Mansion. And while I appreciate the short fuse, I also understand the nature of why we would have an RFI. You know, those are just competing issues. Government does not move very quickly, and certainly the Sinai Mansion is worth preserving. Whether it's here, I am not necessarily convinced of that, or believe that we have to act in a way that makes certain that that happens. But I just think it should be acknowledged that there is a very short window for moving that particular home.
Do you know what that window is?
I think it's October.
April 4th, 2023 is the, it's being demoed if it's not moved. That's from Jim Steinman, who is the contractor, and David Walker from.
Sorry, Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we only take public commentary.
Well, and Ms. Gilbert is a very knowledgeable attorney. It wasn't out of turn, she was trying to provide us information. So I'll just repeat that Ms. Gilbert has indicated that it would be in the spring of next year, there's kind of a drop-dead deadline for moving the building, which takes time, energy, effort to accomplish. And so I just worry about the timing of all of that.
Thank you very much. Counselwoman Weber.
I just have a couple of questions. I don't have a motion. I have a couple of questions about a motion that didn't get a second. So I, my question is, is, I don't think it got a second.
I was throwing it out, okay, he seconded.
Okay, okay, so the matter of discussion is if it's been seconded. If, we've already had some proposals and what have you, why would we want to pay the money without, to Washoe County, pay the taxes, $105,000? Why would we want to do that without at least asking them the different options? Why would we throw that out and pay that money when people are making proposals and having ideas? So I just want to ask that question.
I suppose from my perspective, Counselmember Weber, is that the taxes will be paid by someone at some point in time.
Right.
But we give ourselves more options if we pay them now, and then it takes that issue off the table, then it is not a barrier to anyone, it's not a confusion about whether it must be parks and open space, all that sort of thing. It must be done, and I suppose if the City Manager's Office will indulge us in doing so, even for a short time. I think, my hope, of course, is that, not that we would pay it off and then it sits on our rolls forever. It sounds like there is some interest in the property from at least two persons. If it went out for RFI, there might be more, all those things being equal, it just seems like we should take the small issue off the table and make it so that it's not a barrier to whatever we choose to do with it later.
Thank you very much. So Counselwoman Doherty, do you mind repeating your?
Yeah, I'll repeat the motion. My proposal, or my motion, is that we go ahead and pay the taxes, $105,000, that we put the property out for RFI so that in a future agenda item, we can actually consider any proposal that's come in, and it'll be listed on the agenda so people know. And then, thirdly, I liked Counselwoman Breck's concept that the building, the historic building that is on the site, either be preserved on-site or salvaged and relocated to another appropriate site. And is that amenable? You had seconded my motion?
I don't think so, and I'll explain why. But so my understanding was the motion was the first two, and you've now added a third.
I have.
So I've seconded the first two, but I don't believe I would second the third.
Okay, well, I'm going to just explain. I went by, I drove around, there are many issues associated with this property, including the access egress. I think the roads coming through would have to be configured in that area with the bridge. I think there's opportunities for open space. But both proposers that I heard wanted to preserve the building, both, that I've heard of so far, either on-site or in a different location. So I think we have to, you know, we either believe in our history or we don't. And so I think it's an important component.
Okay, so we have a. We have a motion on the table, I don't believe we have a second for the motion now.
Before we go too far, too much further down this road, I do want to check in with Legal. We said, hey, it's, you know, these three options, we're looking for direction. I do believe we have direction, but I don't know that we can go through the motion process and stay compliant with all the provisions of the open meeting law. And so that's not to say that we can't accomplish what we're trying to do here, because it is just guidance, it's not an affirmative act.
Yeah, just for the record, City Attorney's Office, no, that's, you're well within the bounds of the item at this point in time.
So my motion is in bounds. I mean, I don't have to have preservation, but I would like, I'm going to go out in the public and say, a proposal, I would like to see that as part of a proposal, anybody who's listening.
Could I?
So Counselwoman Doherty, are you modifying your motion to include only the first two items?
I guess I am.
Okay, with a preference. Okay, so we do have a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Counselwoman Breckus, we have a motion on the table.
Yeah, I just think the RFI, because, you know, if we were, a lot of the times that's delegated to staff, is these RFIs, should have 100% preference scale, okay? So 20% is for, you know, respecting the historical character of Reno. 20% is for maintaining, you know, works with the adjoining neighborhood and respecting access to this Riverside Drive, which if you haven't been out there, is a huge issue.
Yeah.
25% is, you know, something else. So it's a rating scale on a scale of 100. Staff comes forward before they let out the RFI and show us, because we will be the evaluators. We're not recommending who to go, you know, they're not going to recommend who to go to it, they're going to show us the proposals on the table, and we will be the evaluators. And so it's good to have an RFI that has 100%, what are the five rating characteristics? One could be as much as advances the goals of the master plan or something. But that gives proposers an idea.
Some guidance.
Huh?
Some guidance.
It does give them some guidance.
Some guidance. And Mr. Manager, do you agree? Counselwoman Reese, I see you've got your comments up there. I guess the question I have before that is, would the? I have before that is, would the option of sending it out to auction still be an option under your motion?
It was not.
Okay.
Not for now.
I guess I'll make two comments. First is to serve your thought process, Vice Mayor, adjourned. Look, how we dispose of it, an RFI may also include the nature of, you know, an auction. I don't know. I'm concerned about the broad implications of saying, we're going to create this matrix under which you must fall or be scored, because I think ultimately this body will see each of those items as potentially different in value. For my concern, I am a strong believer in historic preservation. However, there were concerns that I think were raised by some of the commenters that are really just sort of a thinly veiled way of, a form of NIMBYism, right? I think that oftentimes, people use historic preservation as a way to stop the densification of cities, and they do so under the guise of historic preservation. Not all of them, and not always intentionally, but even well-meaning folks who will say, you know, this changes the character of the neighborhood. That is a form of NIMBYism, and it is a form of using historic preservation in a way that I don't think was intended. Historic preservation, in my mind, is making certain that we preserve the history and people and place, including the houses and the things. But oftentimes, that's used as a way to say, we don't want more density. When our master plan is said, we want density, especially in the core of the city, because it costs less. So I'm not willing to go down the route of saying that, you know, historic preservation will gain preference in that RFP process, although it may ultimately prove to be the reason why we select one project over another. Especially, I think, as you said, Councilmember Doer, the preservation of the existing house that is on-site has a unique way. And I certainly believe that the smart developer would think long and hard about making sure to integrate that piece of property into whatever the ultimate thing is. But I'm not just willing to go out wholesale and say historic preservation will be the highest and best criteria, because I do think that there are concerns that I have about it being used as a way to sort of block density, to block changes in older developed neighborhoods, which, again, tends to trend towards our most affluent neighborhoods. Just not willing to do that.
Thank you very much. We need to move on from this item. We have a motion and a second. I will tell you, based upon Councilwoman Doer's clarification, that this item being considered for auction in concert with any RFIs that might come forward, makes me lean towards not supporting it, because I just don't know what may come forward, and it's...
Well, I said I didn't want to consider auction.
No, that's...
Oh, you do want.
I do, as part of, in other words, we would get a menu of items that would come for us as.
An auction would still be on the table.
Correct.
Well, I'm fine with that. I mean, that, you know, I think we always have that option. We're not foreclosing.
I just got your motion, excuse me, included us from even considering that.
Oh, no.
So if you're modifying your motion to include all requested proposals as well as an option of auction, that I could support it?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
And.
So I have a motion.
Wait, there needs to be clarification, because an auction is very prescribed under state law as a bid. You open it, you propose it, highest bid, no restrictions over here. An RFI is for a project that has some public purpose characteristics.
Right.
And so they cannot, in my understanding, and I think we do have attorneys who are leading this effort, do both. Now, if you had an RFI with a rating criteria and financial advantage to the city was a rating criteria, and you had an offer here for a million and offer here for $5, you could weigh that in your consideration. But you have to do that outside of the bid process, my understanding. But I also want to stay, respond to the comments about, you know, density and so on. In the world that I see this RFI, which is, I understand the bid, is, one of the rating criteria is reality of something coming to fruition. Because there may be a proposal that sounds very of fruition. I have something I'm going to do by April 23rd. And then there may be someone who says, I'm going to do that condo project that was not able to get done 20 years ago. I'm going to go eight stories, when nothing has gone eight stories in 30 years in Reno, you know, which I think throws out a lot of those concerns about NIMBYism. So I think if you had 25% on a project that gets done in two years, you know, that's a really good way to advance a public purpose, which is not having another vacant lot. So you can get to some of these issues, I think, that you're thinking about if we want to, you know, delegate these thoughts to staff or have them come forward to a rating criteria to us. But in sum, I think we're on the right track with the motion on the table, and I can support.
Okay, and Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. Just a last comment. The way I look at the auction is that we'll evaluate the RFI proposals, and then if we're not satisfied with them, we have the option of moving to auction. That's all. It's not that we would select it at that time.
It was more like.
At that same meeting.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to clarify that. Number two, I want to also clarify that while I very much respect where Councilmember Breckus is coming from, it is a little bit difficult for this body to agree on things like 20% and 25%. But I do want to put out into the world that we are going to evaluate in context of our master plan and what we've already adopted, which do have competing principles, everything from densification to protection of open space, everything from improved transportation to protection of history and more open space. So there's a lot in our master plan, and we, as council members, have to balance that with any of these proposals. And then lastly, when we talk about, I did want to just object, when Councilmember Breckus said, she didn't say 25%, if you're historical, she said respectful of history. It could be a new building comes in that is respectful of the historic context. It doesn't mean that it is an old building. So I just, I support where she's going. But anyway, that is my motion.
Okay.
And it sounds like we're ready to vote.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Great. Thank you, everybody, for helping us work through that. All right, Madam Clerk, where are we?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. We're moving on to item H1, which is city council comments.
Any council members have any comments at this time? All right, hearing none, moving on. Madam Clerk.
All right, we're moving into closing public comment, which I have one in the room, Rhonda Tyson.
Thank you, Rhonda Tyson, again. This won't move the needle at all, but I thought it appropriate, at least to advise the council. I believe it was December 2019, if you go back and look at your minutes, you will see that you directed the city manager's office to, within 30 days, put out an RFI. That was almost three years ago, and you haven't acted. Things happened. COVID happened, changes in city staff happened. I understand that. But we've had a long time waiting for the city to take action on this. I also want to make a comment on open space. I'm not licensed to practice law, but perhaps the city manager could check this out. I have read the NRS. Open space use in Nevada includes preservation of historical buildings that have been recognized. That's why I suggested you do that with Sinai Mansion. Because if you put Sinai Mansion on the historical register and put it on that lot, you don't have to pay $105,000 in liens. So, the last thing I want to say is that lot is owned MF30, way back in 2007, I think it was. You did a variance to try to put 40 units on that lot. It couldn't be built because of the easements, the fire and safety restrictions, all kinds of stuff. It didn't work. And I think one of the most prescient things that Councilwoman Breckus said is, sometimes, I'll paraphrase, a bird in the hand, which is what you have with the Gilbert proposal, she will build that, she will move that, that will get done. Everything else that you're talking about opens up this lot to more speculation. And with the upcoming real estate downturn, you very much run the risk of us standing here in another five years with a blighted lot that has not been developed. So I appreciate that you're going to put this out again. I'm just a little frustrated because I had this conversation with you almost three years ago, and I'm back. So let's get this thing done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, any closing public comment?
We have no additional commenters in the room. However, it should be noted for the record that we received six. Sorry, I turned my timer off. We did receive six additional comments after 4:00 PM yesterday, or general in nature, those have been distributed to the council and will be available on the website. And with that, we have no additional public comment.
Thank you very much. This time, we're moving in, making a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.